Almost silence, please. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffin. Hogg.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Boe.
I'm here.
Mr. McGinley.
Present. Thank you.
All present.
Mr. Dulok, do you want to comment about the executive session, please? Mr. Dulok.
Yeah, could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Council met an executive session from 5:30 PM until 6:00 PM on Teams, and received a report from the chief solicitor related to a potential litigation matter involving a contractor, and then also a discussion relating to a personnel matter, and concluded at about 6:01 PM.
Thank you. We do not have any recognitions or ceremony proclamations because this is an early meeting in the month of December. Do we have any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Someone, if please, whatever feedback there. There are two items on the agenda, item number two and item number three that I'm going to ask to be removed. I'm going to ask that we place on the agenda in two and three, a motion to ratify the committee dealing with the solid waste disposal, and also to appoint an ad hoc committee to also deal with the solid waste disposal plan. When we get to that point, there'll be more information that'll be provided as to why those motions are removed and replaced with two other motions at that point. Any objections to the changes in the agenda as announced?
Mr. McGinley, can we get a roll call vote?
Excuse me?
Can we get a vote on that, please?
Sure.
That needs to be the procedure, so.
Ms. Lawrence, would you roll call on that? If you vote yes, remove the two items that are currently on the agenda and replace them with the two items that were mentioned by voice. Ms. Lawrence, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Mc- Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
unanimous.
Okay, so that's those adjustments in the agenda. One other thing I'd like to bring up, whatever council would like to decide. We got a late email yesterday from Mr. Josh Longmore from the Conservation District saying basically that they've agreed to act as the lead agency for the county action plan. We had talked about that last meeting, and that last meeting, there was a question whether they were going to continue in that role. As a result, we tabled or removed from the agenda the motion to appoint a council member to serve as a representative with that committee. People like to see that motion to appoint a representative to that committee on the agenda this evening.
I would like to do that, and if it's appropriate to remove it from the table when we get into the meeting, that I'll make that motion at that time.
Okay, so we'll make that prior to getting into the county council agenda, okay? So it'll be like 3A or 3B. Ms. Howe, you're going to make the motion to take it off the table and also to have a member of council serve in that capacity, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Any objections to that? If not, we'll move down to, well, we've done additions and deletions. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Who was that?
Urban.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffin, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We go down to motions to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting.
So moved, Linda.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Sheila.
Ms. Sedman? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Moving down to the next motion. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second for Ms. Sedman?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Now we're down to public comment on agenda items, please.
I think there was a nay to that last motion.
Yes, it's Walter Sharon, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Griffin voted a negative for the last motion. Members of the public who would like to comment in regards to agenda items, the microphone is open. Very none, we're going down to a motion to approve the minutes from the December 8th meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley, a public comment, please, I was on mute, sorry.
Now you're going to hold up for a second, okay?
Okay.
Do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, okay. All right, we're going to go back to public comment. Who was the gentleman who was trying to speak, please?
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Yeah, the comment that I have is, so Mr. Longmore with this with this group, is that going to eliminate the rainwater tax with what they're trying to do? I don't understand.
No, sir.
I don't underst-
We discussed this two meetings ago, Mr. Manta, what the county action plan was. And it has, it does not deal directly with the stormwater fee.
So then, is it going to be another fee that they're going to put on top of the people in the county?
Well, after we have a representative with that group, they'll be able to keep us updated on that, Mr. Manta.
Because I really, you know, it's really disheartening to find out something that, you know, they already have this fee that they're charging now, and if somebody's going to come up with something to put another fee on top of the people,
Well.
my goodness.
That's not part of the agenda, that fee. The agenda is to appoint a representative for that committee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Representative, so they would be able to voice our opinions.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public? If not, we're going down to the motion to approve the minutes. Ms. McDermott made the motion, the Sedman made the second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
One no?
Vote no to Urban.
Mr. Urban, two no. Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. So we're down to old business, which we don't have anything listed this evening. Moving over to the next page. Motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale of certain parcels.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's Chris, I have a quick statement to make before we get into the agenda, if that's okay?
Absolutely, Mr. Perry, go ahead.
Last meeting, I voted no on the budget amendment for merit increases. I should have abstained because my daughter is a court reporter in Division 13 of the courts. So I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity. Again, going over to the motion to adopt the resolution approving the sales of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions, LLC, acting as Luzern County Tax Claim Bureau. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Kendra.
I think Ms. McDermott was second on that one. On the question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley, it's Mr. Griffin.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to be supporting this resolution today. Hopefully, at some point, the Real Estate Committee, and I know Ms. McDermott and the the team has been working diligently to try and straighten out some of these real estate issues, and I'm not going to support this resolution. Hopefully, moving down the road, I'll be able to support these repository sales. Unfortunately, I just find some discrepancies that are very disheartening to me that we give properties to the municipalities for a dollar, and and there's some fairly decent properties that are in there. I appreciate the fact that the Real Estate Committee has done some work in changing the minimum bids on improved properties to $1,000, so kudos to the committee for that. But we still have a long way to go on this repository list of properties that constantly come up. We got 75 of them just recently on this list, and I had to ask for a lot of information in order to be somewhat versed on whether I want to approve them or not. And so now we're getting deed cards from the assessor's office, which is helpful for members of council, so they know exactly what properties are involved and what the values they are. There's also other items on the, we now have access to the GIS mapping system. Thank you to the county managers for giving council members that opportunity so we could do an overfly of where these properties are actually located. So we're getting more information as council to make this process a little bit clearer for myself, particularly as a voting member of the council. But I just don't feel comfortable with some of these properties that are in here currently that I would feel comfortable voting for this resolution. Hopefully, as we move forward, Ms. McDermott's team will clarify these things and move it along. But as this list currently stands, I just can't support some of the properties that are in there being sold. So, so not at $500, and certainly not to municipalities for a dollar. So that's basically my comment, I will not be supporting this resolution.
Anyone else? Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, if I could just jump in here real quick. Based on what Mr. Perry said, do you think it would be appropriate for us to have a motion to amend the vote on that, to make sure that that's reflected in our votes, or no?
I don't think that's appropriate because of the fact that was a no vote, number one, and it was a vast, a strong majority in support of that. It was no votes, so.
Okay, very good.
But I'll review it with this listener, and if necessary, we'll take action appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we removed two and three, and we replace them with a motion to ratify committee, and then to appoint an ad hoc committee to work with that group in regards to this plan. Mr. Dulok, do you want to enlighten us as to what we're faced with this particular plan? And why we have to do it in this manner?
Yeah, today, Ramilda and I, well, actually, over the past number of days, Ramilda and I had gone over a number of issues related to adoption of the 10-year solid waste management plan. I had not been hot on this issue really until maybe the past few days. Ramilda and I got up to speed, and what we learned, there are a number of issues with adoption. Number one, at this point, I believe Mr. O'Neill and Beth Donardi may have been a little misguided on some of the timeline issues. I do believe that they were advised that they could secure an extension. I actually saw that they were advised that they could get an extension on the time period to have council approve or ratify the plan. Ramilda and I reviewed it today. That's really not the case. In addition, the advisory committee, I think probably because it was the last plan was put in effect prior to Home Rule, maybe two years before Home Rule, I think it was 2010. That committee was never reestablished by council. I don't think it was on council's radar to approve that committee, make it part of its ABCs. And the committee did not advertise its meetings. I believe, I don't know whether it had any more than one, but it certainly needed at least one meeting to approve the plan that was submitted to council. So what we suggest, Ramilda and I had gone through this quite a bit. What we're suggesting, council could not ratify this, this plan at this time anyway. There's a section in the code that provides that if council does not ratify the plan within 60 days of the last, of the end of the public comment period, which we're beyond, that a certain procedure takes place which includes the county going back to the advisory committee and notifying the advisory committee as to the reason for the refusal to ratify. In this case, it's because it was not brought before council in time. That meeting would be an advertised meeting, public meeting. Ramilda had already assured Mr. O'Neill and Beth Donardi that the Office of Law would have legal counsel assigned to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. We do have some concern, I do specifically, I won't speak for Ramilda on this, but I think that that Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Donardi were given a little bit of bad advice. So we're going to have to deal with that at some point. But the way to fix it is if council would consider, we would ask, if council would consider ratifying the advisory committee that exists now and has existed, ratify them in order to get this plan back before council within, I believe we have a 45-day period under the code now to get this resolved. And if anyone has any questions?
Questions for Attorney Dulok?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, real quick, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dulok, the advisory committee, names that are on that advisory committee are folks in, without any disparaging remarks, for sure. I mean, I appreciate their work, but I don't think there's a lot of expertise there on that advisory committee regarding some of the areas of the solid waste program. So I, you know, I don't feel real comfortable with some of the folks that are on there. I would rather, what have you, can you advise us as to how do we make a new advisory committee with people of a little bit more expertise? Or are we bound by that one that sits there?
No, no, and I mean, full disclosure here, we're really, have our backs against the walls timeline-wise. But, and you know, the fact is, Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Donardi, they had really put a ton of work in on the plan that's there. I can't speak for the extent to which the advisory committee members were involved. But my understanding in talking to Mr. O'Neill today was that just about every county really relies on a consultant to assist with preparation of the plan. Beth has been involved with a number of these, I know. I believe Mr. O'Neill has as well. You know, right now, the answer to your question would be, we would really have to hustle in order to get the ABC committee in order to do whatever the ABC committee does in order to get candidates and, you know, vet them, and then once they're, once they're impaneled, there's a process that would have to be followed on their end. So, and all this has to be done over a holiday within 45 days. So, and we're already, the clock has been ticking since, I think, December 8th. So.
And if I just can add, it's the same exact membership that committee that was approved by the commissioners. And the statute, and I'm trying to pull it up right now, the statute does specify certain individuals or industries that need to be represented on the committee. There's no there's nothing in the statute that says how many committee members there should be, but the committee, the statute does specify certain certain industries that have to be represented. And my understanding is that the individuals on this committee do meet the qualifications of the statute. The statute also, you know, it also has, it indicates the members from the public. But if there's other discussion, I can, I'm trying to pull up the statute so I can give you the list of industries that are noted in the statute.
The simple answer, I think, Mr. Griffin, is we have a 45-day period, it's already started, like, we already lost a week because we postponed this last meeting. Also, if we go through and go through a committee and go through all the processes that we use to formally to committee, we don't have the time between now and the middle of January. So unfortunately, I think our only alternative in order to get this plan done and meet the guidelines and the deadlines that are out there would be to ratify the committee. We will appoint, as a second motion, some members of council to work with that committee, and then they can get the plan back to us in a timely fashion so we can meet that deadline. It's not the best situation, but I think it's the current situation that we're faced with. And if we don't do that, then we're looking to another deadline that we missed, and now we're backed into more of a corner, I believe.
Okay.
I do have that list, I do have that list in front of me. It includes citizens, organizations, industry, the private solid waste industry operating within the county, the private recycling or scrap material processing industry operating within the county, the county recycling coordinator, if one exists, and any other persons deemed appropriate by the county.
So once we get through this, hopefully, then council, whatever process they want to do as far as formulating committee, we could do that. As Mr. Dulok indicated, this is something that was done 10 years ago. So I don't believe anyone on council is even aware of the committee being there or, you know, the function that they serve.
What's the penalty if we're late? What is the repercussion on that?
I don't have to say.
Right now, I think what we had looked at was, we were looking at the consequences for missing their, this first 60-day ratification period, which is contemplated in the statute. It allows for that, that the county could not ratify, which the county did not. To be honest with you, though, I did not review. We literally.
We didn't have an opportunity to review the extent of any specific penalties or losses to the county.
Now, right now, though, we're not looking at any, well, I shouldn't say that, we're, there's nothing by statute that, that, no way that we're affected by this delay, which it's too late, anyway. There's nothing we could do about the situation we're in right now, other than make sure we get it resolved within the 45 days.
Okay. Question here, then, did anybody not call DEP and ask them what are the ramifications if we miss it?
DEP gave us the, they gave us an extension.
Yeah, and they were, they gave, they put our people in a position where they thought that they were legally granted an extension, and some clerk or whoever at the, at DEP put us in a position where statutorily, they're not permitted to give us an extension. The statute is the statute. So relying on giving people a call is, was perilous. Obviously, in this case, it caused us to miss the original deadline.
So the current 10-year plan doesn't stay in effect until we pass a second 10-year plan or another, a subsequent one?
The 10-year plan that's in existence now terminates at the end of the year.
Okay. Okay. I was, I was looking at an old newspapers.com article, and I see where, you know, the previous advisory committee was, you know, selected by the county commissioners back then. Adrian Maroli was on there, I think, in the planning phase years ago. You know, I had posed a bunch of questions through email, and I guess this is what might respond this evening, I'm assuming.
This is a response to your email inquiry.
Okay. All right.
When we were, when we were doing the research to respond, what we did unveil is that the 60-day period had lapsed to ratify, and now we are in Section 504, as Attorney Dulok noted, that the statute conflict, contemplates that the counties don't ratify a plan. So right now, we're in Section 504. And we do feel that it's necessary to have the committee be approved by council and have a public meeting that is advertised and, you know, is open to the public.
I mean, I would feel very uncomfortable naming individuals, not knowing all of their background or having a resume or a brief background on people. You know, and then allowing even the public to comment on those individuals as well, because I quite honestly, you know, have not dealt with any of those individuals, don't know anything about them, and I will not vote in favor of putting anybody on any committee without knowing who they are.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to ratify the committee?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee. On the question?
Hi, this is Leanne. Just one question, what is the name of the committee, or is it, are you just saying?
It's a committee that worked with the Waste Disposal Recycling?
Usually, they're called Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Yes, SWAC, yeah, S-W-A-C, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only thing is, is that I, you know, I mean, it's hard to vote on something where we don't even know what the ramifications or repercussions are if we shouldn't vote on it or should vote on it, so.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
I agree with Mr. Urban, no.
Mr. Hawes?
Yeah, not pleased with these circumstances, but yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Okay, now, I'd like to have a motion to appoint an ad hoc Committee of Council Members to work with the Committee that we just ratified in order to produce the plan that has to come to Council.
Moving down to Griffith.
Mr. Griffith, okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Snee. On the question?
Quick point of order, too, since this was not on the agenda, does the public have the ability to comment on this?
No, we put it on the agenda, Mr. Urban, back when we were together, too. It was placed on the agenda.
Yeah, we weren't aware of the Committee people, though.
You're right, because the Committee people gets, they get appointed at, by an ad hoc, because it's an ad hoc Committee, and we will be appointing them so we can get that work done, so we can get the plan in place and meet the deadlines.
I think this is a new agenda item, Mr. McGinley.
No, it wasn't a new agenda item, Mr. Griffith, we put it on the agenda.
Right, today.
Today, before we went to a public comment.
Okay, so, yeah, we put it on before we had the public comment, so.
That's correct.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Snee. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to the next item, which was another addition, was to appoint a Council Member to act as a representative on the County Action Plan for the, through the Conservation District.
This needs to be removed from the table. I move to remove it from the table.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe to remove it from the table?
Second.
Snee? All in favor of removing it from the table indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries, so it's now off the table. Do we have a motion to appoint a Council Member to the County Action Plan?
So moved, Chris.
Chris Perry? Do we have a second?
Sheila. Second.
Ms. Sedman?
All in favor of appointing a Council Member to the Tax, County Action Plan to represent?
Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, unheard, motion carries. And now we'll open up for nominations for a Council Member to be appointed.
Move to open nominations.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second for Ms. Howe to open the nomination?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? All in favor of open nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, unheard, motion carries. And now we'll open up for nominations for a Council Member to be appointed.
Move to open nominations.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second for Ms. Howe to open the nomination?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? All in favor of open nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, unheard, motion carries. Do we have a nomination?
Yes, Sheila. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sheila, sorry.
I nominate Walter Griffith.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, that's by...
Second. Lynda.
Ms. Sedman, second by Ms. Howe.
Motion to close nominations.
That's Matt. Nomination is closed by Matt. Who was the second, please?
Second, Harry.
Okay, Mr. Hawes, very good. On a motion to close nominations indicate by saying aye, then motion to close nominations. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. So, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Griffith to the County Action Plan by Ms. Sedman, second by Ms. Howe. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be sending an email to Mr. Longmore, so he's fully aware of that, okay? I think we're through the items under County Manager, now we'll go down to items on the County Council. Motion to adopt a resolution transferring the $210,000 from the account, if the number is listed there, to account number listed there also. And this is the resolution, do we have a motion?
Presented, Snee.
Mr. Snee. Do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second.
Leanne.
Leanne, very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be sending an email to Mr. Longmore, so he's fully aware of that, okay? I think we're through the items under County Manager, now we'll go down to items on the County Council. Motion to adopt a resolution transferring the $210,000 from the account, if the number is listed there, to account number listed there also. And this is the resolution, do we have a motion?
Presented, Snee.
Mr. Snee. Do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second.
Leanne.
Leanne, very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving down to number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving the advertisement of a request for proposal for an independent insurance broker services. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hawes, do we have a second for Mr. Hawes?
Second, Lynda.
Ms. Howe? On the question?
Yeah, Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Yeah, Counsel, I submitted that, that budget amendment, or I guess not, it's a request for the reissue in RFP for our insurance brokering services, and you all read that, it was submitted for your work packet. And, you know, when we looked at the budget and the manager's summary on page two, and I'm just gonna, gonna read it here, it says here at the beginning of our budget, "Insurance premiums per fiscal year 2021 have doubled based primarily on market uncertainty. The County is not alone in experiencing increase for insurance as rates have escalated for almost every municipality across the United States." While that may be true, you know, our insurance payment was doubled over 100% this past year. I find that just inexcusable. I can understand insurance rates going up. We understand we had some big decisions this past year that were made, and I think we understand how insurance works. Anybody that drives a car or owns a property understands that rates are gonna go up because of, of things, of claims that you file. So, that I understand. Also, that being said, I don't know why the insurance broker wasn't more clear in the initial meeting on December 1st, when we were at the Budget Work Session, that we were, we were entertained with some, you know, some good forecasting, perhaps, but we didn't get the figures at that point, and I don't know where the ball was dropped, if it was with the broker or just with the manager not being very clear about this. But our insurance rates increased from, in 2020, for liability insurance specifically, $630,000 to $1.3 million forecasted for this year. When I asked for the paperwork, that just, it was a no-show. I don't, if I had a contract for $50,000 with, with a client, I would most certainly be very expedient in getting the paperwork back. I had asked for it, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for delivering on that, I really appreciate that, but you shouldn't have had to do that. And so then, just a few days ago, on the 10th, we got the paperwork, and lo and behold, sure enough, the deductible went up for the QBE for law enforcement by $200,000. So, in 2020, the deductible's $50,000, and now for 2021, that's $250,000 for the deductible. So, really, if you didn't really look at the numbers, if you just said, okay, yeah, insurance premiums are going up, that's great, but it's going up closer to $1 million if you factor in the deductible. So, if we, if we have more expenses over $250,000, that's another 200 grand gone out the window. So, I really think if this were really any other line item, I think a lot of the Council would be up in arms. But, you know, I just wanna make sure that we can air this, and that when we look at last, over the last cycle, we had, we debated for, for quite a long time, over $6,000 increments here from some of our budget items, well, this is, this is a big one. And I don't know, Mr. Chair, if the brokers here, if they need to speak to this, if that would be appropriate, I'm all ears, but...
I did not ask them to be on, I didn't, I didn't think that we needed, you know, you want, I'm sorry if you wanted them on, I was not...
No, no, no. I did not ask for, Ms. Chair, no, no apology needed, I don't hold you responsible for that either, but...
Could I just be clear, could I ask a question for clarification?
Is Mr. Hawes done?
Yeah, I'm done, Ms. Chair, you have to, Ms. Howe, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Howe, you've got the floor.
Right, and my question, I seconded the motion, Harry, but I would like to know, are you planning, is, is your request for issuing an RFP for a new broker to take at the end of the current broker's contract or immediate?
Well, yeah, yeah, thanks, Lynda. I mean, obviously, you look at the, at the resolution that Council signed, and the contract goes until 12/31/21, and I, I could not find the contract, that's why I put the RFP out there. And I asked, I asked the Office of Law if they would get back to me when Sharon wanted the, the verbiage for the proposal, never heard back from them, just to make sure...
That was mine, I, I'm sorry I overlooked that. The contract is online, but I'm sorry I, I overlooked responding to you.
So, so here we are, and if you look at the RFP, you know, real, I think the contract, it kinda speaks for itself. The Council has the right to reissue an RFP. Granted, it's not the specific resolution that Council passed, but if you read the resolution, I put, I only put a handful of items in there that I think have been violated in this contract. And I can read that if you'd like, Mr. Chair, but I know my colleagues can certainly do that, but, in the process, we had six people respond, six firms, rather, respond to that RFP. One, Council Majority rejected beforehand, which served this County really well with the, we had the cyber attacks, we had, we had a lowering of premiums, and we also had a lower deductible. They did a commendable job, if anything, we should have had them on board and, and give them a bonus or something, but, you know, it was rejected, and now we have this firm, and the debate at the time was, well, the, the prior firm had much more experience, they had a bigger reach, they could discuss with other, with other vendors out there, be willing to take some of our premiums, and that was, that was really unentertained, and we went with, with this current broker. So, I know there were a few members that were not here at that time, because they're, they're new, they have new seats on the Council. I think this is an appropriate time to look for a new vendor and to really get a better deal for the people, considering this went up 100%.
But I guess, I don't think that's the answer to the question, are you looking for when the contract expires or immediately?
So, immediately.
Like, as soon as possible, you would want a new broker to be involved?
Well, the RFP, yeah, the, the RFP, yes, to answer your question, yes. The RFP last year was advertised in September, and we didn't vote on it until the middle of December, so it's entirely possible, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, Ms. Howe?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Sure is.
The, the thing I'm concerned about is, Harry, I just don't know if the things that you're stating are big enough breaches, because I would assume, maybe that's, like, you know, what they say about assume, but that as any good broker, that they have contacted several insurance companies to get the best price. I was reading just recently in the paper about insurance companies, and the rate for, I guess, law enforcement has really exploded because of the number of shootings that municipalities can be held accountable for. So, along with everything else on there, I mean, I think the one that really stands out is the one in terms of law enforcement liability. I just don't know if because the rates went up so much that we have a breach. I mean, in doing the research, we would maybe be able to find out, but I think at this point, we're looking at a possible breach of contract, which is going to cost us money.
Hey, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, it's Chris.
See if anybody else has a question or comment.
Mr. Chair, it's Chris.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Harry, there's no question in my mind that everyone feels the same way you do about that, the increase. I mean, it is, it is astounding. But again, going back to, to what Sheila said, there's gonna be litigation, and, and you know our track record with litigation in this process, you know, it, it may not turn out too well, but I could see exactly where you're coming from, and I'm afraid of litigation, and we don't do very well with that. Otherwise, I would support you 100% Harry.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Mr. McGinley? Walter?
Yes, go ahead.
If, if we do support this resolution, and we go with the new RFP for a broker, would we be holding up our insurance coverages from now until months, until we put a new broker in, and then they go out and rebid the insurance? Are we gonna go ahead and let this broker give us the price on the insurance and then just look for another broker? See, the concern that I have is the broker is the one that gets our insurance for us, and we're already halfway through December. If we go out for another broker, are we gonna be without insurance until we get another broker and we go out and get some more policies? So, that's, that's a concern that maybe Harry can address, if that's where that goes, if we do get another broker at this point.
Well, I think, Mr. Griffith, as you well know, we'd have to issue the RFP, allow time for that to be out there publicly, bring it back, it shouldn't have to be reviewed, would have to come back to Council, so you're talking about, I don't know, six weeks, eight weeks, something of that nature, I would, would have guessed. No, I think our insurance is, is in place, as long as we pay our premiums that are presented to us. If we don't pay the premiums, that's another issue, but I believe that, you know, we have money appropriated in the budget, so I, I believe we'll be paying our premiums, so I don't believe there would be any issue, but certainly we would ask the Solicitors Office to make sure that that coverage is in place, so we don't have a lapse, or a gap, or whatever. So I, I believe we'll be paying our premiums, so, uh, I don't believe there would be any issue, but certainly we would ask the, uh, solicitor's office to make sure that that coverage is in place. So we don't have a lapse or a gap or whatever.
Right. So, so what we could, if we did go with a new RFP, we would be covered. And if we went with another broker and they got better rates on insurance, we would just drop it with the other companies and go with the new company.
Well, I, I, I think we're ahead of ourselves till we know what we're going to do here. But, you know, those things would have to be worked out so that we have the coverage. And we do things the appropriate way so that we don't have any, uh, kickback or, or feedback, negative feedback, so.
We would have.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila again. You know, I just want to reiterate what Chris said. I, I find Harry's motion, I mean, really, it is astounding, the insurance increases. Um, unfortunately, I just think the insurance companies around here are not that big. I mean, the insurance family, the community, believe me, uh, this insurance broker is going to find out that we are, even if our, our insurance is in place, that we are putting out a new RFP when we in fact have a contract with them. And, you know, I think that is really a breach at that point, that you're already looking for someone. So I think that I won't mind, I mean, if we said that we're definitely, or give them notice that we were unhappy with this, what they came up with, and we're letting them know that we're going to end this contract at the first opportunity per our contract.
Okay. Anyone else?
If I couldn't, oh, sure.
Mr. Ross.
Uh, I think Mr. Schnee had something to say there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Schnee.
As, uh, as Chris said, uh, I'm also, uh, totally, uh, supporting Harry's, uh, claim here, but, uh, my only question to the Office of Law, where are we at with this? What, what could be the ramifications? Is Vito there?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Well, I, I,
Mr. Ross, come on.
I think that, uh, uh, all the points that were made from your fellow council members, uh, uh, are accurate. Uh, our policies, uh, are, are, uh, ending. We have to, uh, pay for, uh, new policies, uh, which, uh, the chair indicated you have money budgeted, uh, and, uh, we would have to, you know, pay the premiums that are on the table right now for coverage. Uh, Vito, I don't know if you want to add something, uh?
Well, I mean, my, my recollection of the, uh, insurance broker contract, uh, and I can't speak specifically, I haven't looked at it in a long time, but was that, uh, we had, uh, decided that the best way to get insurance brokerage services was, uh, through a flat fee. Um, in the old days, many, many years ago, um, before, uh, all, before Home Rule, uh, there were, uh, opportunities for, uh, the insurance broker to make money on the backend and premium share and, uh, uh, all kind of other, uh, ways that, that they were able to, to make money. That's really not the case anymore. I think, uh, uh, since Home Rule, I think we've, uh, the, the administration and, and council have done a great job of closing, uh, those possibilities. That being said, um, this broker or any broker, I don't, uh, imagine that there would be, there's certainly no reason for them to irritate, uh, uh, you know, county, the county, uh, to this extent by not putting the package out there and trying to get the best, uh, rate. I think maybe the best, you know, and I'm, I'm not looking to, uh, I'm just looking at, at, uh, being fair is fair. I mean, if, uh, if this truly is not the, the broker's, um, fault, that maybe the broker should have an opportunity to be able to, uh, uh, explain the reason for the rates going up or what they did, uh, in order to, uh, get the best rates for the county. Uh, but, you know, the broker has very little control over specifically what the insurance market is like. And, uh, you know, claims history has a, a great deal to do with, uh, with, with what rates you're stuck with and what deductible you're stuck with. And I, I remember early in, uh, uh, or late 2010, around 2010 or so, uh, is when we really started hitting big numbers for, uh, our deductibles, and then they started coming down. Uh, but as you all said, I mean, that, the rate itself and the deductibles, it, it is an astounding number, and it's something that certainly deserves an explanation. Um, but, uh, to, to, to go forward without having some sort of explanation from them, um, you know, other than the fact that we, we could be exposed to potential litigation, uh, I, I just, it may just not be right. So, did I answer your question?
I don't know if there was a question or a comment out there, but anyone else?
If I could, Mr. Chair, everybody else spoke. Yeah, you look, council members, I really appreciate those who spoke up, and I, I do, I, I mean, Sheila, I agree with you. You know, nobody wants to open us up to a, a breach of contract. And, um, if we look at the RFP though, I, I, I think we do have, I think we do have justification. And, uh, Chris Walton-Bow, I appreciate you too. And, um, I think Walter, the, the biggest struggle I have, and I'm the one that introduced this motion, is, is it truly viable to go out and put an RFP out there? I know the discussion last year, even in, in the late hour, um, we were going to vote on the first contract, I think it was late November. And then council voted on this one. Actually, I did write, uh, it down. We did eventually vote on, on, on 12/10/2019, so it was almost a year ago to date. And even that was pretty tight to, to, um, issue the contract and get that up, but it was possible. And I think at the time, I, if, if my memory serves me correctly, not all our policies came up for renewal exactly on January 1st. I think it was more staggered. But again, I'm not, I'm not a broker, and I certainly don't run the county insurance. So I think that, that's my biggest concern with this. And I, again, I, we take this kind of stuff seriously, you know, I don't just throw an agenda on there and waste all our time. I just really wish that Uppsala would have been a little more forthcoming beforehand, um, we'd have some documents beforehand and management response. You know, these, these are kind of questions that they should be already asked. And I really think that two weeks ago, when the broker was here via phone, via, via Zoom, of course, why, why did that not explain at the time? To me, it's just very frustrating. And it speaks to, I think we could have had the prior broker, I think could have done a better job, but who knows what other brokers could have done a better job. And that's what it comes down to. Um, you know, I appreciate too what you said. I agree 100% that having the flat fee by far and away is the right way to go for something like that. And I don't think anybody wants to do a poor job, but at the same time, what's the incentive to do a really, really, really good job? And that's what I think, I don't think we had a really, really good job on behalf of the taxpayers this time around. Um, so unless I, I think for management, I'm going to, I'm going to continue to, um, put the motion out there to a vote if I could, Mr. Chair.
You have a motion, yourself.
Mr. McGinley, if I could make a amendment to that motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Uh, well, I, I certainly understand Harry's point, and I'm looking at the contract under termination. And even the consultant has the ability to terminate this contract at any time, uh, on his own. I mean, we have that out clause for both parties, consultant as well as county. So the, the contract clearly states that. I think the issue that we're having now is because of the late hour and because of the issue that, you know, we're all concerned about the cost of insurance. I mean, you know, I, I think the cost of insurance is going to be the cost of insurance, whether it be Joyce as the broker or anybody else. I think the issue will be, is how well is the broker going to do to try and mitigate that increase? And I think that's Harry's concern. So my amendment would be is that we, we, we make a motion of counsel that, that, uh, we do this RFP process in July of next year for the termination of this, uh, for,
7/21?
In, in 2021, and that way we're,
Right, July?
Well, yeah, July of 2021, set out the RFP process to go out and look for another consultant. Or maybe, maybe they, you know, the manager will end up picking the same broker. But I think we should certainly do a amendment to make that process happen in July. That way we don't, we aren't under the gun as normal, and we have plenty of time to analyze it. And at that time, if we want to preclude, uh, you know, Joyce from bidding on it, that's fine. That's what council wants to do. That's fine. But I just think at this time, I tend to agree with, uh, Ms. Sademan and other members of council. I think if we go and amend, if we go and, uh, go look for an RFP now, we're going to be put into a, not, not that we, I don't, I'm not concerned about the litigation part. I'm concerned about the coverages and, and all the other issues that go with it. So I think it'd be more appropriate to set this, this ball in, in motion in July of 2021 and, and move it along.
Okay. I'll second that amendment.
That's Ms. Hauck made a second to that? On the amendment, any questions? Uh, Mr. Griffith has proposed that we use, we send out the RFP in July of 2021, which would then commence probably the first of the year of 2022. But, you know, we'll get the RFP ready and then we will vote on that in July. So we have a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, on that question, if I, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Walter's amendment? Yeah, I, I would support that. And I'm just coming off the heels of the debate about solid waste contract and backing, having our stuff, I was back into a corner. I, I think Walter said, um, nonetheless, still very, very disappointed, and I, I think that there is consensus there with council. So we're looking for a better, better deal for the taxpayers.
Well, let's have a roll call then on the amendment to move the RFP process to July of 2021. Made by Mr. Griffith, seconded by Ms. Hauck. Roll call, please.
The amendment is going to go into,
And now we're going to vote on it, uh, we're going to vote on the RFP in July of 2021. Correct, Mr. Griffith?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I'm confused. We have a resolution out with the first and the second?
Not voting on the resolution right now. We're voting on the amendment to move the RFP timeframe to July of 2021.
I believe it's to, to, uh, take effect at the end of this current broker's contract is the point.
Uh, yeah, but I think we'll have the RFP in July, and we'll have all those dates and deadlines that are P at that time.
Right, but it would take effect at the end of the current broker's contract.
At the conclusion of the current one.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Sademan?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Raedel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. So with that vote, putting the RFP into July of 2021, I don't know if we need this motion and on the agenda.
Yeah, I, if I could, Mr. Chair, I was, I was thinking the same thing. It's, it's really an entirely new motion, really.
Right, so we'll have this scheduled in July. So will, will you withdraw your motion then, Mr. Haas?
Absolutely.
Ms. Hauck, will you, you withdraw the second to Mr. Haas's motion?
Well, if there's no motion to second, I will, but I don't think it hurts to put it on the record that we're going to do this.
Uh, I think we did by voting that we're going to have an RFP for insurance brokerage services.
We didn't. We voted to amend this resolution. If you drop this resolution, that amendment is, is worthless.
That's true.
Neil, when you bring up a very good point, you know, Mr. Chair, I'll call the question. I'll keep my, my motion.
Roll call.
Very good point.
Roll call on the amended resolution?
Yes. Correct.
Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Chair, you know what? Maybe we could restate that, Mr. Chair, so everybody knows what they're voting on.
Yeah, can you, can you explain that to us one more time, Mr. Chair?
What is happening at this point in time, we had a resolution that was processed more by Mr. Haas, seconded by Ms. Hauck. Uh, Mr. Griffith made a amendment to change it to the point at which the RFP would be voted on, you know, the RFP itself would be voted on in July of 2021. So effectively move the date so the RFP would come to council in July of 2021.
Well, I think it was that the RFP process would start in July of 2021.
Well, I, I thought that he wanted to vote on it.
To vote in July?
To vote to put out, put the RFP out for,
In July.
Process.
Right.
Right. That correct, Mr. Ross?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everybody clear?
So a yes vote would support it, a no vote would,
That's right. A yes vote would support the RFP process beginning in July of 2021.
Essentially, it's the same vote as the amendment. It's just that this is the final vote on it.
All right, Mr. Chair, one last question.
Go ahead.
Essentially, like Linda said, we are going to, we would do this after the contract, but the current broker is, is older.
Well, I think when the RFP is put together, uh, Mr. Perry, we would have certain dates in our RFP that would define the period of time that we would be looking for insurance brokerage services. Two years, three years, whatever the council wishes at that point. And the, the start date would be January 1, 2022, I believe.
Okay, okay.
Mr. McGinley, this is Dave Pedrick.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Just so I'm clear from administrative side of things, we're at, so county, county purchasing will be putting out an RFP in July of 2021. We're going to sit down with county council probably April or May of 2021 to make sure that we have everything in there for that. And I'm going to move forward with signing off on all the insurances and everything along those lines, which I have to get done by the end of the year for 2021. That's my understanding. Is that wrong? No, that's correct.
Need to have insurance coverages in place. And like I said earlier, there are funds available in the budget to cover those. So yes, we should have all the insurances in place, whatever you need to do to make sure, uh, the county has the proper coverages. And then in July, we're going to have an RFP process that we're going to go forward, one year, two years, three years, whatever the council decides. And the start date would be 22, January 1 of 2022.
We got it. Thank you.
Is that clear to everybody? Everybody satisfied with that, or do we need other explanation?
And again, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, this, I, I, and I, again, I'm just assuming this would therefore move up this, this component of the budget up a little closer to the, um, presentation date of, of October 15th for the charter. So therefore, we won't be in the same predicament that if we, we have our dissatisfaction, we can discuss that more appropriately within the window too.
Uh, there will be effect obviously in the window, but I think a lot of the insurance, the coverages are based on the, your record of, uh, insurance payouts, accidents, et cetera. So I know they usually like to look at least three quarters of the year and probably closer to the end of the year as they can get. So I would assume that they'll probably be looking at the end of September anyway. And that's, that's up to them to make those decisions.
Very good.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Raedel?
Yes.
Ms. Sademan?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to get into the process of the meeting. We want to take a five minute break and,
Yes.
We'll have to, uh, use the lavatory or get a, something to, to drink a little bit. And then we'll get into the budget amendments as presented. Page 30, we'll start with. So we'll take a five minute break. It's, uh, 12 minutes after 7:00. How about 7:17? We'll, um, commence with the budget amendments, please.
Tim, you're muted. And Sharon, if you're back, please use star six to unmute your phone. We were getting some feedback.
Yeah, she's, she's back now. All right, let's see who's back and available. Mr. Griffith, are you back?
Ah, yes, I'm here, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, we got you. Mr. Haug, I think I saw you. Are you back?
Yes, sir. Back here as well.
Thank you.
Somewhere here.
Ms. Howe?
I am here.
Okay. Ms. McDermott?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. Oh, Ms. Rado?
I'm here.
Very good. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Here.
Very good. Ms. Saban?
Here.
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Very good.
And Steve's here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
So, all right, we have everybody back. Uh, we're going to turn to page 30 in your packet, please. And we're going to proceed through the amendments as presented there on page 30 and through the next several pages, okay? So under the.
Mr. McGinley, before we get started, could I, could I clean up, just make a motion that any cuts that we make or alterations we make in the budget go into the reserve account? So we get that out of the way on the front end as opposed to waiting until the end, or?
Well, I, I think you, maybe you want to wait till you know what the amount is.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
We're going to take a little pause once we get through these, Mr. Griffith, and allow the budget and finance people who are on, give us that number. They'll, they'll do the calculations. So we'll know exactly where we're at at that point.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So we're starting in Department 4112, which is the county manager. And the first account was the telephone internet account. The manager in his proposed budget is $961. And in the budget amendment proposed by Ms. Griffith, he proposes an amount of $500, which results in a savings of $461. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On to question. Anyone on the question? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Saban?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay. Moving down to the next item under the county manager, special legal services. The proposed amount is $5,000. The new amount proposed by Mr. Griffith is $2,000. And that would result in a deduction of $3,000. And as you can see there, Mr. Griffith provides a, no cases have been considered in 2020, so no reduction is needed. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
On to question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Saban?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Okay. Moving down to Division 70, human services. First, telephone internet. Manager proposed budget has a number of $2,500. The new amount proposed by Mr. Griffith is $1,500, which will result in a deduction of $1,000. And the narrative says remove jetpack expenses and reduce budget due to not spending over $1,000 in three years. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On to question.
Mr. McGinley, may, may our IT director discuss what a jetpack is and how that works?
Absolutely. Now's the time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Pedri and Mr. McGinley.
Okay.
So the jetpacks are used to provide data access, internet access to county laptops mainly. Um, when people are on the road or if they're working from home, which of course during this pandemic, most of the county is working remotely to one degree or another. They're not being handed out to anyone who is, um, who has internet access that can utilize that, that is sufficient for, um, doing telework over the VPN. Um, so they're only being issued to personnel who need to work from home or work remotely and who don't have sufficient internet. And as you know, that a certain internet provider such as DSL and, and the like is, is not reliable and not quick enough to, to work adequately remotely. So that's where the jetpacks come in. With the pandemic, it's a situation where everyone who needs to work remotely is working remotely at the same time. It's not a situation where we could say we'll, you know, put two or three in a department and they can share them when someone goes out to, to need to work from home for one reason or another, or needs to work on the road. They could take it with them and bring it back to the office. It's a situation where when people are being sent home, that everyone needs them at the same time. Uh, so sharing them is really not a possibility in normal times and especially during the pandemic. Also realizing that a number of employees who are being asked to work from home also have school age children at home who are learning through cyber school and are vying for the internet resources they have at home. Um, so even if some people have a decent internet connection, it's possible that their connection to the county is not reliable because there's too many people in the house streaming video at the same time for school and things like that. Um, so those are some of the reasons why we have the, the jetpacks out there. Um, also, the, uh, that same line item, I believe, is used for the cell phone reimbursements for employees who um, use their own cell phone for county business rather than having the county incur the cost of a second cell phone for them to carry around. Um, but in no case do we have an employee who is either has a county cell phone or gets reimbursement for a personal cell phone that is also getting a jetpack because those smartphones do have data plans on them. Um, so those with county cell phones could use the data plan there without purchasing a separate jetpack.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley? Mr. McGinley, Dave Pedri?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pedri.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Listen, I want to be clear with everybody here. We're talking about human services, yes. Mr. McGinley said human services, but we're talking about Veterans Affairs. Um, it's one thing to say I support the troops, but then it's another thing to actually do it. And if $1,000 helps the Loser County Veterans Bureau help veterans, it's worth it. So, um, I would recommend strongly not cutting any money from Veterans Affairs. These are people who stood for our country and they need our support every single day. I'm very, very proud of Jim Spagnoli and his group for what he does for veterans every day. And if $1,000 helps them serve our Veterans of Loser County, I think it's worth it. I recommend a no vote on this.
Um, I, I would also add, Mr. Pedri, that in Veterans Affairs, um, I only have recorded one jetpack, which would be a $480 expense for the year. Um, so the, the balance of that fund is for expenses other than jetpacks. So to, to use the reasoning that we don't want them to have jetpacks to reduce that amount doesn't compute, if you will.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Steve.
Go ahead.
You know, like quite honestly, I mean, I see that you guys have it like budgeted all over the place. I mean, quite honestly, a jetpack should be in the IT budget. Um, you guys probably should track them a little bit better, maybe utilizing some type of software like a Tango or, or, or something where you get usage reports. Um, does anybody look at that, you know, and then on top of it, you know, like, people, are, are we chart, are these people writing this? I mean, they could probably write the, this off on their taxes if they use their own personal item, you know? I mean, when we are just handing out jetpacks in a sense, it's a benefit um, that we're providing. So, you know, if, if people are getting reimbursed, if it's going into their paycheck, I'm hoping that they get taxed on it. Um, but quite honestly, I mean, I managed all the jetpacks where I'm at. I have software. I can go in and look at zero usage. So that way we're, you know, we could suspend accounts that aren't being utilized or, or maximized. Uh, quite honestly, you know, a lot of people make enough money that you should be using your own personal items. Uh, you can use a hotspot on your own personal cell phone. I don't really charge a jetpack to my own self and I work in IT. I mean, I use my own hotspot. I mean, I do get a reimbursement through where I work. But, and, and, and hopefully people aren't doubling up on the benefit either, you know? Um, but the, the idea of a jetpack is only as needed. Uh, usually would, would be a company issued laptop in, in a critical position. But DSL can handle VPN, uh, you know, and, and if people have very slow DSL, maybe they need to upgrade at home. But, you know, you're asking the taxpayer to fit foot a $50 bill every single month uh, for, for services that are, you know, work from home remotely. You should be able to do that in your own house. I mean, I understand that people have children, too. A lot of the cable modems today have two channels on them. You'll have, you know, 2.4 gigahertz and 5 gigahertz. One, one person could jump on the second channel, you know, and, and that bandwidth is somewhat segregated. So, you know, um, I, I just find it very disheartening and disenchanted that we've got to pay for all these jetpacks in, in the county.
Anyone else?
Uh, I, I can speak, this is Mauro again. Um, I can speak from personal experience that the $40 reimbursements that we receive monthly for using our own cell phones for county business does get taxed by, uh, through payroll taxes. Uh, so we lose a percentage of that, um, but that's besides the point. Um, the, you know, as far as having two channels, that's of course the bandwidth within the house, um, which has nothing to do with the bandwidth between the house and the provider, uh, which is often what the problem is. Um, I can tell you that nobody is double dipping. We don't have, like I said, we don't have anybody who's getting a jetpack and, um, another, uh, cellular device or, or reimbursement. And also the, as far as them being, the, the bill's not being consolidated in IT. Uh, it's part of our Verizon contract, which we do have a consolidated bill, uh, that IT does review from time to time. Um, but that bill is then separated, um, primarily because it was originally cell phones and not jetpacks. But, um, that bill is segregated by departments so that we can charge back to each specific department, uh, their use of, of either a cell phone or a jetpack. And most of that bill is of course cell phone, um, and, and not jetpacks. Um, like I said, in, uh, you know, for the, the item that, that's on the table right now, um, Veterans Affairs is only showing one jetpack and, um, I don't know how many cell phones they have. I don't have that in front of me. But, um, the, you know, for the number of employees there, it's not all cell phones either. There, there has to be, um, another expense being covered by that line item um, that's appropriate, um, in that department. And unfortunately, I can't speak to that because it, it goes beyond the, the scope of what I, I review.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
I, you know, I, I find it troubling that we're paying cell phones. Much as we had that discussion early on when Home Rule first came about, everybody has a cell phone. And now we're paying people for cell phones. They could use their own personal cell phone. I use mine every day. And I use it for the county and I use it for anybody else who needs to use it. And I don't charge anybody extra for that. I'm not getting charged extra. It's an unlimited plan. So I don't see why we pay for cell phones, first of all. Second of all, I think the ability for us to provide a jetpack, if they're an assessor out in the field possibly and they need the jetpack because they have to connect to their cell phone as a hotspot, that's one thing. But to give somebody a jetpack just so they could have access to the internet, they have county issued cell phones. They can go use a hotspot to their county issued cell phone and, and, and connect to the internet if they need to. I just think that we're, it, and, and, you know, the ability for, for the manager to say that we're trying to deprive the Veterans Affairs Office of services to help our veterans is really a stretch here. I mean, that's really a stretch. What's not a stretch is the fact that employees are taking advantage of the fact that they're getting a high salary and also getting paid for a cell phone. That's, that's not a stretch. And that has nothing to do with the ability to help veterans. Has everything to do with this sense of entitlement of some, of, of people in the county that feel that they need to be reimbursed for a cell phone, of which it costs them nothing extra to do service for the county with their own personal cell phone. So I just find his comments a little bit disingenuous. But I think, I think the jetpacks are, are necessary in certain areas. But I remember when. But I remember when we had the issue with the Office of Law, we were told that the, and correct me, Ms. Crook, that you have a jetpack at home and you also have a county-issued cellphone. So if that's not accurate, then please correct that. But I thought that was what was said when we talked about jetpacks in the Solicitor's Office, and that was the need for the jetpacks.
No, I don't. I use my personal phone for county business. I don't have a county-issued phone. I never have. I was offered one when I started. I declined that. So I have my own cellphone, my personal cellphone, like you, I have an unlimited plan. But I do, I do have a county-issued jetpack. It was given to me when I traveled. I still have it. And occasionally, I need to use it because, as Morrow said, there are other people in my household who use our internet and sometimes it goes down and I have to use my county jetpack.
So what about members of council that have a problem? Should we get jetpacks, too?
Mr. Griffith, my...
Available to the county council?
Well, we've always never proceeded with that because we always felt the county council would not want that as a quote-unquote perk or benefit, whatever it would like to use.
It's not a perk, it's a benefit.
I've always used my own...
It's a service. Mr. Pedri said we're helping the, we're denying service to the Veterans Affairs Office if we take this jetpack away. We're not denying anything here. Councilmember have the same problem, or no?
I disagree with you on that, Mr. Griffith.
Well, I'm just saying. Everybody in the county.
I know. But I said when I aspired to run for the position, I knew what the responsibilities were and I accepted those, so.
Yep, and the same should apply for the employees as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please. The motion is to reduce the proposed budget amount of $2,500 to $1,500, which would result in a $1,000 deduction. Motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Irvin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. House?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry?
I'm sorry, no.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. McGinnley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Okay. Moving down, continuing under Human Services, Children and Youth. The budget amount proposed was $644,000 under Shared Personnel. The new amount would be 5,000, 500,000, $60,000, which would result in an $84,000 reduction. Do we have a motion?
Mr. McGinnley, can I just remove that from the budget amendments? I spoke to Lena Hill and a couple of people in Children and Youth, and I'm not interested in proposing that at this time. So we can pull that off.
If not, we will remove that. Moving down below that to Mental Health/Developmental Services, Shared Personnel, again, $394,351. The new amount proposed is $350,000, which result in a deduction of $44,351.
And the same thing, Mr. McGinnley, on that one as well?
Anyone else on council?
Thanks.
That's removed. And then moving down to Office of Human Services, we have wages nonrepresented. The proposed amount, $874,232. New amount, $800,000, which resulted in a change of $74,232.
And Mr. McGinnley, I want to do the same on that one as well.
Okay. Anyone else on council? If not, that's removed. Moving to page 31. Operational Services, Department 4174, which is Buildings and Grounds, under the natural gas. The proposed amount is $30,000. The proposed amendment is $20,000, which result in a $10,000 deduction. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Senator Sheila.
On the question? O'Neill, is he on? Does he have a...
Mr. Chair, I was asking, is Mr. O'Neill around? Somebody can speak on that side.
Yeah, that's on, I see his icon, but Mr. O'Neill, your microphone is muted if you're trying to speak. Mr. O'Neill, your microphone is muted if you're trying to speak.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I apologize, I was on my phone and the computer at the same time. I would like to speak to the amendment for the gas for Building and Grounds.
Go ahead.
The amount that we requested to increase from the $20,000 from last year was actually $25,000. And the reason being is that we moved or intended to move gas usage for the courthouse out from under the boiler plant budget and into the Building and Grounds budget, where it should now be placed due to the fact that they have their own service. What happened was in 2020, we removed $25,000 from the boiler plant budget. It was supposed to have been added to Building and Grounds and it wasn't. So at this point in time, we've already run over on our boiler plant budget because we had to keep the courthouse account in that budget. We didn't have enough in Building and Grounds. So the reason that we're asking for more money, I don't honestly believe that the amount of money that's in there now will be enough to support the Building and Grounds budget when you include the courthouse account. I've taken some averages over the last 24 months since we've implemented service to the courthouse. And during three different 12-month periods in that 24-month timeframe, the average gas bill was $35,000. If you were to add that to the current value that we have year-to-date for Building and Grounds for the other buildings that come out of that account, you're looking at close to $55,000 that we're going to need. And that is also keeping in mind that the past winter was one of the mildest in many years on record. So to reduce this to $20,000, I mean, I can just tell you that it will certainly not even be close to enough money to pay for the gas bills out of the Building and Grounds budget.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. O'Neill, I'm looking at the New World here and it says you spent $14,000 so far for gas for year-to-date. And I know you still have December coming and that's, you know, obviously December's colder than, you know, our summer months, obviously. So I anticipate you being pretty close, somewhere close to $20,000, I would guess, in that line item by year-end. I mean, I would not be adverse to amending that to $25,000, but I think $30,000 is a little excessive.
Yeah, but, Mr. Griffith, what I'm trying to tell you is that that number of $15,000 year-to-date does not include the courthouse account. We have moved the courthouse account into Building and Grounds, and that alone is $35,000 a year. If you, if you care to look at the record or the past years from Boiler Plant Gas, we reduced it in 2017 to 18, we reduced it over two years during the energy savings, we reduced it from 185 to 170 and then to 160. That $25,000 was the savings we realized as a result of the Energy Savings Project. Then, last year, we lowered it to 135. That difference of $25,000 was supposed to have gone into Building and Grounds, but somehow mistakenly, it did not. So as I said before, we kept the building, we kept the courthouse account in Building and Grounds because we had a couple dollars in there that we thought would be more appropriate, but we've already gone over. We're already transferring funds. And if we put the $35,000 and add it to the almost $20,000 that's currently being taken out of Building and Grounds, you're looking at $55,000. And right now, we have $30,000 to pay for that.
But you didn't increase the budget for gas in the boiler plant?
No, we did not. No, we reduced it last year. We reduced it $25,000 last year, again, with the intention that $25,000 was supposed to have been added to Building and Grounds, but it was not. It was somehow missed, a mistake I take responsibility for. And since then, we've been transferring money to try and make up the difference. But again, the three-year average for the 12-month averages for the courthouse over 24 months is $35,000. If you add the $35,000 to the $20,000 that we're going to probably spend this year, that's what we're going to have to pay out of that account next year.
So you don't anticipate overspending your gas bill in the boiler plant next year, then?
No, the boiler plant will be, should be okay, but we're going to be short in Building and Grounds. But if you reduce it further, there's no way we're going to be able to come up with that money. I don't firmly believe we have enough right now. $30,000 is not going to be enough to cover what I estimate to be a $55,000 annual cost.
But my question for you is, you already spent $137,000 in the boiler plant this year. And you only budgeted $135.
Right, we reduced that last year. But what we did, Mr. Griffith, is we kept the courthouse account in Building and Grounds, even though it was supposed to have been moved out, because we felt like we had a little bit more room in light of the mistake that we made by not adding to the Building and Grounds budget for 2020. So next year, that, what you're seeing is Building and Grounds does not, this year, it was supposed to, but it does not include the courthouse account. So what I'm telling you is, once we move that account, we're going to be adding a $35,000 burden on top of that $20,000 that exists already.
Okay, I follow, I follow what you're saying here. Right now, the courthouse account is in Boiler Plant. You're moving it out of Boiler Plant account, correct?
Yeah, and again, I made them, you know, I take responsibility for the mistake last year. We did cut it in Boiler Plant and we were supposed to have added that amount to Building and Grounds, but somehow it got missed.
Understood. Okay. All right, that explains that, that's fine. So I, if Mr. McGinnley will indulge me, I'll take that off the agenda as well.
You're going to remove the motion, Ms. Sedman? Will we remove the second? Ms. Sedman?
It was hard to get it off. Yes, I will.
Okay. So then, we're not going to deal with that, that amendment is taken off the agenda.
I do have a question, though, from Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Parsons or Mr. O'Neill?
Oh, Mr. O'Neill, I'm sorry. The money that was your mistake, okay, that you failed to put in Building and Grounds, where did it end up going? Where did it go, or you just didn't have any money?
No, that's why the gas bill looked like it was such a drastic reduction last year for the third year in a row. It shouldn't have been. If you take the two accounts together and look at the three-year history, it was cut over $60,000 and it shouldn't have been. It should have been cut about 35.
Okay.
So last year's budget was short, detained for your question, Ms. Sedman.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving down then under Road and Bridge. Mr. O'Neill, stay on the line, please. The budget amount presented in the draft budget was $4,000. The amount asked for in the amendment is $2,500, which would be a change or differential of $1,500. Do we have a motion in that regard?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Yes, Sheila.
Okay. Ms. Sedman? On the question? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Do you have a comment on this under Road and Bridge?
I would like to acknowledge Mr. Griffith's attention that the current year-to-date figure is in target with the $2,500 from last year, which he is recommending we adjust it to for 2021. The reason that that amount was increased was Mr. Plesh was attempting to try and move some small bills, this one and the next item, out of Road and Bridge and take it out of liquid fuels where it's currently being used and move it to general funds so that we can allot just a few more dollars for road repairs. So that was the reason for the increase. The $2,500 represents the gas account for our District III garage, which does in fact have a natural gas line supplied to the building. It's in the Mountain Top Industrial Park, Crestwood Industrial Park. The additional funds that we were seeking were actually more than the, more than the $4,000. It was, it was actually, I believe, Mr. Plesh had originally requested eight because we have propane gas at the other three district garages. And we were attempting to move that expense from liquid fuels, which it is an eligible expense for liquid fuels, but we were trying to free up a few dollars to put towards road improvement out of the liquid fuel budget.
Questions?
Just a comment, Irvin.
Go ahead.
I mean, I appreciate the honesty, Mr. O'Neill, and hopefully in the future that we get an honest budget. You know, if you're looking or seeking additional funding for other items, that it be just simply programmed in the appropriate places and then be explained at that time instead of trying to pad something.
Well, Mr. Irvin, we weren't, we weren't padding it. The liquid fuels budget is a balanced budget, as you know. So we weren't trying to pad anything. I'm coming forth right now to explain why we asked for the increase. It was simply to free up a small amount of money, additional amount of money, for road repairs out of liquid fuels.
Right, but, I mean, then why not just put it simply under liquid fuels and reimburse it so it's clear and not somewhere like a natural gas? I understand your rationale behind it, but why not just be forthright up front instead of just having to explain yourself, that's all.
I can assure you, that was not the intention to not be forthright. We were, we were trying to do that, to free up the money in liquid fuels for road repairs. That was misinterpreted, I apologize.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Huggs?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry? Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Okay, doesn't pass. Moving down to the next item, again, under Road and Bridge, sewer line. We have $5,000 in the proposed budget. Mr. Griffith proposes a new number of $1,000, which will result in a change of $4,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Irvin.
Mr. Irvin? On the question, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, counsel. Again, I offer the explanation similar to the previous line item. We currently pay approximately $1,000 for our sewer bill, which is for the Road and Bridge and Engineering Building on Reckord Street. The additional $3,000 that we were asking were the sewer bills for all the district garages that are currently being paid out of the Liquid Fuels Fund. Once again, if that is the interpretation, it was not our intention to try and disguise this or hide this, but we were attempting to free up a few dollars and move the similar counts instead of splitting them up to free up, it was a total of about $6,000 for road repairs in liquid fuels. That was... That was the explanation for that increase.
Okay, other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Haas?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sabin?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Two yes and a no.
Going down below to under Administrative Services, specifically the Bureau of Elections. The first item is wages nonrepresented, and the proposed budget is $106,500. The proposed amendment would be $103,000, a differential of $3,500. And there's a narrative there, the director's salary reduced in 2019 to $60,000, and then 1.8% raise, which we eliminated the last meeting, at the 61 plus a deputy at 42,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, on the question.
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila. What was the news today about Ms. Wachtilla leaving? Do you suppose that we are going to be raising that salary of the director?
Well, that's a good question, and I don't have a definitive answer.
Mr. McGinley, it's, it's Linda.
Probably looking at that. I'm sorry, somebody else was trying to get in there, sorry.
It's Linda. I was just going to say, could we ask Mr. Pedri, because he did say that they intend to advertise?
Yep.
For the job, what it would be the range that he would be advertising that position at?
Mr. Pedri?
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. I would be looking to advertise that position at a range based upon the experience and qualifications of the, of the candidates. The range would be 59,000 to 64,500. That way, it would not exceed the current salary, and it would give me a little bit of a leeway there in order to, if I get somebody really good, it'll be on the high end, less experienced would be on the low end. But I do have to attract candidates here. Obviously, as Council is well aware, we, this position was posted numerous times. Last time it was posted, I would hope that Council will take that into consideration when looking at, looking at this salary line item here. I would, I would think a range of 59,000 to 64,500 for this position. Hopefully, we'll get some good candidates. But I would say that, I would say that, you know, talking to C cap, we are one of, I don't know how many, over a dozen counties looking for, looking for elections directors or deputy elections directors at this time.
And the, the salary line in the position budget for that position right now is 64.5?
Correct.
So you would not be going over the position budget amount?
I would not be going over the position budget amount, correct.
Thank you.
That's true.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
I mean, I have a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Sure, even at a salary, say, arbitrary for $50,000, with the merit increase of 3%, that's a $1,500 increase over the first year. And as, as far as I can see, I'm, we're not management here, we're, we set the purse strings. But to me, that's very appropriate that after a year of service, which I don't think this position will be filled January 1, so we could probably even save a little bit more in fiscal year 2021 on this position. But, you know, the incentive is there to commend staff for doing a really great job. So even at, say, a $60,000, or I, that was, the top range is about 64.5, even $60,000, you're looking at close to $2,000 increase after the first year.
There's no merit increase. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Haas, I don't see no merit increase. There's no merit increases.
Let Mr. Haas finish.
For 2022. For 2022, so the new staff member will be hired in sometime in early 2021, and at the end of the year, that's when, when non-represented staff get the merit increase. And so, the whole, the whole ideal of a merit increase is to give folks something to shoot for and to strive for. And so, even at the, a lower range there, you can still increase your salary by $2,000 in one year. Whole purpose of merit increase, I think we've gotten away from the ideal of that in these past few years.
Okay. Somebody else who'd like to speak there?
Well, Mr. McGinley, Dave Pedri here. I mean, the only thing about increases, the only thing about merit increases that I would say is that it's up to county council. And as the management is now very, very well aware that, I'm not going to relive last Tuesday's meeting, but council didn't, didn't support raises for management, and some of them did an absolutely phenomenal job. So even if this director does do a phenomenal job in, in 2021, doesn't mean that they'll get a raise. And the last time someone got a 3% raise, I think was two years ago, but anyway, it doesn't really matter. But the rate, the thing about merit raises is that it's not, it's not in any way, shape or form guaranteed to anyone. And even if you do do a good job, it's still up to county council to put that money into the budget, which obviously decided against to do it this year. So I would think, let's, let's find, let's find a range. Hopefully, I get somebody good. I'm competing with a lot of other counties out there to get elections director, and we'll go from there.
Anyone else?
Just kind of, Mr. Chair, the consensus was, if I may?
Sure.
Sure. The consensus from council with the merit increase was that with the COVID, you know, the average taxpayer there is really struggling out there, and that's the whole reason. Had no bearing on the staff whatsoever. Obviously, it's helpful to get increases, but when we want to make sure that we have a tight budget, that's what we had to do, to look at the full picture here. I would even make, make an amendment to that, to that cut to reduce the salary scale to like 55 to 60. I would add another $5,000 to the 3,500 there. Actually, I'll make that, that amendment if I could to...
You can make an amendment, Mr. Haas.
Raise that line item by, by a further $5,000 to make it $8,500.
Does Mr. Haas have a second for the amendment to increase the savings from $3,500 as written on your sheet to $8,500, which would be additional $5,000? Do we have a second? Hearing none, that amendment fails. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley? It's Walter.
Go ahead.
Just, just a little history on this whole position thing. If we remember back a couple, two years ago or so, when Marissa was there at the office and decided she was going to lead the county, the salary, the position budget was set at 60,000, and the manager hired a new person and paid him 64.5, away from what was budgeted in the position budget. So that's the reason why I wanted to roll it back to the $60,000 number the council approved two years ago. I understand the ability for him to find qualified people, but I think $60,000 is a sufficient starting point for someone if, if we in fact hire at the high end. We had a director who was, I thought Marissa was very competent, and I think she got paid, you know, she got paid considerably less than 64.5. And, you know, quite honestly, we, you know, we had some issues with this election, and somebody was making almost $10,000 more than the person that was there. Well, $5,000, anyway. So I think 60,000 is more than enough money for the director of elections to start at. And then, at some point, you know, obviously, we're not a salary board, and we don't regulate how much more money Mr. Pedri can pay, but if he has other money in the budget and he wants to pay somebody more, he can certainly do that. But I think the issue is that the position budget was set at $60,000, and we pretty much were told, you know what, we're putting this person at 64.5, whether you like it or not. And I don't, I don't quite honestly appreciate that. So that's, that's why I think we should roll it back to the starting rate that we had when we lost Marissa, and I'll put the ad out for the new director at that point.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley. Walter, the only thing that I'm concerned about, I thought that it looked like 59,000 to 64.5 was a good range, because there is that possibility, because we had a lot of issues this election. There is that possibility that someone out there could come to Luzern County and be very, very experienced and do an incredible job. I mean, we don't have to give them 64.5, but I think it's an appropriate range.
Well, I mean, I certainly appreciate your opinion, Ms. Sabin. I think that if we got somebody that was really good at what they're doing, 64.5 probably would be well worth it, but unfortunately, I don't, I think it gives him the tools, absolutely. I think it gives him the tools to hire somebody that's very competent, but I think, I think 60,000 is plenty to put a cap at. And then, if he decides to hire somebody that's way, you know, overqualified, or he wants to pay more money, then, you know, he can find money in his budget this year to do that, justify it.
Anyone else?
Just like when he hired Marissa, or just like he did when he hired Shelby.
Anyone else? The only thing I would say is, you know, unfortunately, I think the rules have changed in regards to the way elections are going to be running going forward and in the recent past. I think the obligations that the director has have increased, and the responsibilities have increased. So I personally like the range, and if we get somebody who's experienced, I think that's fine. If we go to a higher part of the range, if there's someone we hire that doesn't have that experience, then I think we should probably be looking at the lower end of the range. But I do think we need the range in order to hopefully recruit some very good candidates who will do an outstanding job. That being said, the motion is to reduce the amount by $3,500 from 106,500 down to 103,000. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sabin?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Okay. Moving down to the next line item, wages overtime. Number in the proposed budget is $8,000. The number proposed by Mr. Griffith is $5,000, which will result in a reduction of $3,000. I'd like to note that on, last week, the 8th of December, we dealt with this wages overtime, and we did come to an amendment of $6,500 for the new, but, the new budget number, which resulted in a $1,500 reduction.
Yes, so Mr. McGinley, if the chair would allow me, I'll just pull that away. I, I do appreciate the fact that Mr. Haas brought that amendment last meeting, and I have no problem.
Okay. That's been dealt with, so we'll move down to the next one then. Under Office Supplies, again, under Bureau of Elections, the proposed budget has $7,000. The proposed amendment takes that number to $6,000, which results in a $1,000 differential. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second? Who was the second, please?
Walter.
I'm still not sure who it was.
Walter was the second. I was the one who put the motion through.
Okay. Ms. Sabin, you made the motion, and Mr. Griffith made the second. Very good, thank you. Question, on the question. Anyone?
I guess just one comment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, truly, I really hope management is keeping a running tally of all these extra costs that are being incurred as a result of, of bad legislation with the elections from Harrisburg, and even worse, execution. And this is, legislative committee will take this again to our delegation, will be beating the drum, probably won't be heard, because I'm very cynical at this point. But, you know, again, all these costs are being passed down to the county, and some members even just voiced, it's going to be hard to find an elections director even at $65,000 this year. We know it's been said that there's over a dozen elections directors across the state, the state that have now left, they've separated from employment, probably really because of bad leadership from Harrisburg. So again, I just hope that the media covers it, that this is a real problem. We've been finding this out on the Inquiry Committee. There were drop balls all over the place. Again, I think a large part emanates from Harrisburg, but my little chance to get on the soapbox for this line item, I wholeheartedly support it, because it's not fair that we have to bear these burdens, again, for bad government in Harrisburg. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just, Mr. McGinley, it's, I just want to say, I, I wasn't happy with necessarily the answers of what, when we were asking questions about that. It's not, to me, the legislation in Harrisburg. I think there are just a lot of issues right now with voting. I don't think, Harry, you're going to be going backwards. I think it's only going to become more issues. But I'm voting for the amendment, but not for the reason of the legislation.
Okay. That being said, roll call.
And remember, I'll just say, if I could, Mr. Chair, having a constitutional republic does not come cheap, it does not come easy, and I would rather safety over lack of security that was merit.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Amendment passes. Moving down to Department Mapping, under, under Other Contractual Services.
We had, we have one in Advertising, Mr. McGinley.
Well, we did Advertising the last time also, Mr. Griffith.
Oh, is that one of Harry's amendment last week?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll remove that, thank you.
No problem. Again, we're going down to Mapping. Other Contractual Services, the manager's proposed budget has an amount of $2,000. Mr. Griffith, I think, is zero, correct? There's no number there, so I assume it's zero. So that would result in a differential of $2,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, on the question. Is Mr. Reese on the call? I thought I saw his icon earlier.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Reese?
Sorry about that, I'd like to speak to this, please.
Go ahead.
All right, so 2020 was actually the first year that we had monies in this line item for the consulting services. Previously, it was in, let me pull it up real quick, not consulting services, it used to be in management and consulting services. For 2020, it was moved to other contractual services. What we'll be using this money going forward is, we have, our online portal was helped, was developed along with a vendor, that was done with a capital improvement project. And right now, we only have about $1,500 left in that capital plan project, and we're going to be using this $2,000 to help with any assistance we need for that and for any issues that come along throughout the year with our servers that we manage in-house.
Okay. Anyone for questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sabin?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Haas?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Two yes, nine no.
Thank you. Moving down, under Information Technology, Repairs and Miscellaneous. The proposed budget had a figure of ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars. The proposed rule number by Mr. Griffith is seventy thousand dollars, which is, gives us a differential of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Urban? On the question? Mr. Demaro?
Yes, if I may, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
Um, so the important thing here is that we're not moving forward into twenty eighteen or even twenty twenty, but into twenty twenty-one. And we need to budget for the expenses we expect to have next year. Um, I can go over those, um, item by item, if you like, uh, to show that we really have no, um, nowhere to pull money out of or anything that we can give up that would, um, provide the savings that Mr. Griffith is looking for. Uh, would you like me to go ahead and, and run down the list?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so our networking equipment, um, is the same as last year. That comes in at eighteen thousand, two hundred. Um, those are fixed contracts, um, or for maintenance, um, and they're renewed every year. Um, our next change for that one will be in twenty twenty-two, when some new equipment that we had purchased last year, uh, when the warranty expires on those. Also, we have, um, eight thousand in, um, licensing for our firewalls and our VPN. Um, that, uh, begins in twenty twenty-one, so that eight thousand is a new expense for next year. Um, and, uh, the equipment we purchased a few years back, um, had the, uh, had a five-year, uh, license included with it. Um, so now in twenty twenty-one, that expires and we need to renew it annually. Our data center, UPS and HVAC systems, we're expecting a five hundred dollar increase in each one of those, uh, maintenance agreements, uh, for next year. So those come in at five thousand, fifty, five hundred respectively. Um, every year, we have a three thousand dollar expense to replace, um, battery backups, UPSs for our network equipment in the various wire closets around the county. Uh, this is an ongoing rotation, um, of a, a five-year life cycle, uh, for all of that equipment. So that's a never-ending expense. Um, we have eight thousand dollars, uh, for network replacement parts, um, for, uh, network equipments that, um, goes beyond end-to-life or, um, breaks down beyond, uh, the maintenance, uh, warranty on those. And we do have a large number of, uh, network switches around the county that we do not have under maintenance because it's not cost-effective to, to pay the maintenance on them. It's, uh, um, for how many we have, the statistics prove out that it's better to, uh, replace those when the, when they die or, or repair them. Um, we have thirty-seven hundred dollars in PPL pole attachment fees. That price went up by twenty-two hundred dollars, uh, from last year because of the, um, additional fiber we ran with the capital project, uh, last year. Um, and we have no choice but to pay that or cut our fiber down, um, which, of course, we don't, uh, have any intention of doing. Um, uh, we have another five thousand that we put in the budget every year for, uh, cabling repairs, whether it's copper or fiber. Um, this expense typically costs us between four and eight thousand dollars a year. Um, so at five thousand, we're, uh, we budget slightly below the, the median of what we expect. Um, uh, beyond that, we, uh, have our SAN, uh, maintenance, that's our, uh, storage systems. Uh, we have two, um, different storage systems. We have the backup storage system, which, um, costs us forty-two hundred dollars, um, last year and this year, uh, for, um, to maintain that system. And of course, that's a very critical system that we can't afford to, uh, have break down. And, um, with those, uh, contracts, uh, from the manufacturer, direct from the manufacturer, when an individual disk fails, um, they actually, uh, get an alert, um, at the same time we do. And we typically get, uh, replacement discs, um, by courier the same day. Um, and of course, that's critical because we can only have so many disk failures, uh, before the, the entire system would collapse. Um, so it's, and very important to keep that system under maintenance. Uh, same thing with our main, uh, SAN storage system that, uh, runs the a hundred and sixty virtual machines, uh, that we run for the county. Um, that warranty expires in twenty twenty-one. Um, so we're looking at, um, uh, what was that figure? Uh, fourteen thousand dollars a year, starting in twenty twenty-one, uh, for that as well. Um, also in this line item is, uh, capacity management, um, yeah, which is adding additional storage and discs to, uh, uh, fill out our, um, SAN systems. And, uh, we typically look at twenty-five thousand dollars per year in additional discs to, to add storage capacity to that. Um, this year, most of that storage capacity is going to go into our backup systems. Um, so all of that added together, um, actually comes out to ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, um, which is about eight thousand dollars above, uh, what we have budgeted. Um, and the discrepancy there is the, um, uh, firewall, uh, licensing that begins in twenty twenty-one. We had, uh, missed that, um, back in the summer when we were putting the, the budgets together originally. Um, so we're actually, uh, a few thousand short on what we need to, um, run all the equipment and maintain it for the year.
Thank you. Questions? There are none, roll call, please.
Ms. Sadek?
No.
Ms. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Rado?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
One yes, ten no.
On that line item, uh, after hearing Mr. Demaro's, uh, report and the fact that we're like eight thousand dollars below what we probably should be, I'll make a motion that we add eight thousand dollars to that line item in order to meet the requirements that Mr. Demaro indicated. So I make the motion, do I have a second?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? On the question?
What line item are you talking about, Mr. McGinley?
The line item that we just voted on with your budget amendment, Mr. Griffith.
So what number, what do we change the numbers to?
Eight thousand dollars more would be ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, Mr. Griffith.
From what's the budgeted amount?
Ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay, just say, I want to get that into the record, ninety-one thousand, six hundred, and you're cha-changing it to?
Ninety-nine, six hundred. Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
No. No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight no, or eight yes, three no.
Uh, motion carried. Moving down, again, under Information Technology, Repairs and Software, the proposed number in the budget, five hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. The new number proposed by Mr. Griffith would be five thousand, two hu- twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, excuse me, which result in a net differential of fifty-six thousand, five hundred, eighty dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Demaro?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGinley. Um, and basically the same situation here where we really have no, um, room to give any money back out of, uh, the proposed budget to, uh, cover the anticipated expenses. And I can go over those line by line as well.
What's the bottom line number, if you could, if you continue with what you have now? What's, what's the sum?
The sum of everything that I have in my line items-
That's the line item.
Um, is actually five eighty-three, five eighty, which is two thousand dollars above what, um, we have budgeted. Um, and there've been some changes, um, since we originally put the budget together. Um, but the, uh, the biggest single increase, um, well, no, not the biggest, but, uh, one of the significant increases is, um, the Microsoft contract, which comes for renewal next year in, in June. Um, the best figure I have for that is about a three percent increase and, uh, the value I have in here at four hundred and fifty-five thousand, um, including the services, um, that we had purchased additionally this year, which includes the team's licensing that we're using to run this meeting, for example. Um, but anticipating, uh, roughly a three percent increase for next year. Um, and it could be as high as five percent, uh, but, uh, what I'm hearing, um, and it's way too early for Microsoft to commit to anything, uh, but I'm hearing about a three percent increase to be expected. So that gets us to fi- four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, for that contract that we absolutely cannot live without, um, or work without or run the county without. Um, there is, uh, in addition to that, uh, there is another, uh, twenty thousand dollars, uh, which is increased over, uh, by five thousand dollars over our, um, budget amount of fifteen thousand last year. That is for off-site backups, which are encrypted and stored, um, I like to say, west of the Mississippi. Um, so that if anything disaster were to befall the Wilkes-Barre area, such as, uh, uh, not necessarily the snowstorm coming up tomorrow, but a hurricane like Sandy coming up the coast and wiping out, uh, uh, more than one of our buildings where we have off-site backups currently located, um, within the, uh, city limits. Um, we have the ability to, uh, not only restore all of our systems, um, from this, uh, cloud storage facility, but we have the, uh, ability to spin up virtual servers there as well and, uh, run the county out of the, the virtual environment if, um, a disaster were to strike. Um-
Okay, question from Demaro?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Okay, Mr. Demaro, um, question about the teams contract. How much did that cost the county this past year? Do you know that offhand?
Um, that, that amount for teams was not a tremendously significant amount. I believe, um, we're somewhere between eight and twelve thousand dollars altogether. Um, that was, uh, for twenty twenty, um, uh, charged against the CARES Act. Uh, but we're not expect-
That's what I was going to ask, okay?
Right, um, but we're expecting to have to, uh, renew that in June because all of our, um, all of the subscriptions, uh, or contract dates end, uh, June thirtieth with Microsoft. Uh, so, uh, assuming that we would need to, to continue with teams, whether it's, um, to the extent we are now or, God willing, uh, with a pandemic having waned by then, uh, to a much lesser extent, uh, we are going to have to spend some money on that. Uh, but that's not a, a, a very large, significant, uh, amount of that. But I did want to include that in as a, a change to the contract over last year. Over twenty-
So just to clarify then, so it's, it's a one-year contract? It's on a different fiscal year than the regular budget because it starts, what, July first? Goes until following July first? And you, you, CARES money covered a hundred percent of that contract regardless of it's the eight or twelve grand figure?
Um, for the, for the teams now, um-
For the teams, yeah.
For the teams, right. So, uh, whether, um, the CARES Act covers the entire amount or if they prorate that, uh, to December thirtieth, I'm not exactly sure how that works in this case. Um, but it's not something we have much of a, a choice on, um, something that needs to be covered. Um, if we get, if we get into, into June where we're negotiating the, the new contract, and that is actually a three-year contract with Microsoft, um, that is, um, paid for annually. So we pay every year, but, um, we, uh, commit to a three-year agreement with them and they lock the pricing in for three years. Um, which is why you have a-
But that's just the price, that's not the contract for terms, that's just the price. But we only, we only have one year of service.
Right, so the four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is a one-year price. That's the year one price. Um, and that's estimated because, like I said, Microsoft does not quote this far in advance.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, we, I'm worried if we leverage those CARES fund to cover, cover more than we got out of it, but okay, you know.
I, I think, yeah, I think it would be difficult, but if, um, any CARES funding does come through, um, in twenty twenty-one, um, you know we're going to be looking to, uh, to leverage that as well and save, uh, general fund dollars if we can.
I mean, the, the courts for, for the most part are, are that way until at least in January. So I, I think it's definitely one twelfth, uh, probably going to be covered. But you're right, it's, it's still a crystal ball, we don't know for sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, Steve-
Go ahead.
So when I'm looking at these line items, though, you know, you have like annual expenses in, in, in these repair miscellaneous repair software. Why aren't these like segregated into like annual contracts or, um, in, under computer software in general, like under the five forty, twenty-two account instead of, um, repairs miscellaneous or repair software? Because technically, you know, an annual contract is not a repair. That's an ongoing, like, expense that you should be anticipating or forecasting. Uh, when I look at repair, I'm talking about like contractual repair when something breaks, you know? So, you know, if I'm looking at this, I'm correlating it with the position that we just gave you. So how would that position save us any money, you know, through the repair process? Because having that additional position was supposed to decrease, you know, the need to go out and hire somebody to repair something that's, that may be broken or, you know, ga-gain a skill set that maybe you're missing in the county at this point. Because, uh, you know, repairs miscellaneous, repair software, I don't think is the appropriate line item to put an annual service contract or annual maintenance on, like licensing for Microsoft. I would put that under at least computer software or, or make it an annual, you know, uh, licensing line item or something to that nature, so it's more clear.
Yeah, and, and, and I said this, um, when we, uh, discussed the IT budgets originally. Um, I don't disagree with you. I personally don't care which line item it goes under, I, I-
We do.
Trust, yeah, I, I understand that, and, and, and like I said, I don't disagree with you. Um, I have trusted the, uh, the auditors to correct any, uh, categorization. But, uh, the reason, for example, the Microsoft contract is here is that's where, uh, County Manager, Manager Lawton had, had put that six years ago. Oh, I know, but we, we, it's kind of, you know, every year, it's, it's in the same category.
Well, you guys have the ability to change this to make it more cohesive, so it's more like understanding for everybody, like on council, that we're not questioning certain line items in, in depth like this if we know exactly and there's some clarity with it. You know, maybe budget and finance need to take the lead on it and, and not so much you is, you know, I mean, you obviously, as, as, as a director, have the ability to go in and, and adjust those line items and, and tell budget and finance to fix them so we have a more clear understanding of it. But when I look, like I said, when I look at repairs, it's something that's a break-fix thing, okay? It's not something where it's an annual contract buried into a break-fix line item.
Um, yeah, and you're, you're looking at that from a, a health perspective as repairs, but the other half of that is maintenance. You know, when you talk about annual maintenance contracts, um-
Maintenance isn't a repair though, maintenance is maintenance.
Right.
And that's maintenance is anticipated.
Right, but it's the same line item. Uh, five fifty, forty-nine is repair slash maintenance, uh, for software. Um, but a- again, i-if council, um, doesn't mind the, you know, looking at a budget next year, um, that is going to be wildly different as far as where everything is categorized, I, I wouldn't mind, um, working with, uh, budget and finance or even the, uh, um, the auditors that come in and audit the books to, you know, gauge exactly where, um, each particular item, uh, should go. I, I'm not opposed to that.
I mean, I mean, I would expect the managers to take a lead on that, you know? I mean, and, and that's what's so frustrating about looking at a budget. Every year, we go and picking it line by line, but you guys work there every single day and you, you should know- But you guys work there every single day and you, you should know a- as, as management to, to categorize these things in a more descriptive way. You know that these things are annual, so it doesn't belong in a repairs line item, that's all I'm saying. You know, it, it would be, a- at least then you can anticipate, okay, annual contracts or annual licensing, you, you forecasted three percent in there and, and it's, it's cut and dry at that point. Not going back and, and I don't like miscellaneous, and I really don't like repairs slash software. I mean, you, you know, if, if the software's broken, yeah, we might need somebody to go and fix it, but i- if this is software that's ongoing, that's really not maintenance. Or, or basically it's maintenance, but it's not a repaired item. You understand what I'm saying is a repair is a break-fix in my mind.
I understand, um, and I, I certainly don't want to be argumentative, I'm just to say that, you know, maintenance is also covered in that same line item. Uh, that would be a, that would be from a much different place.
Maintenance, uh, under maintenance then.
Yeah, there would be a, a completely different line item that had to be created, I think, I don't think there is one that's just software maintenance.
All right, I'd like to know. To look at and decide on what's the best kind of format. Anyone else have questions?
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
Mister, Mister Demaro. Um, what line item are the computers for the council coming out of?
I think that hope is coming out of CARES money, Mr. Griffith.
Well, I'm asking Mr. Demaro.
Yeah, so I think that's fair.
I'm waiting to get an answer as to when we're going to get those, first of all, but more importantly, this is a public meeting. There's nobody from council's camera on, the IT guy's camera is not on, people don't even know who's speaking. This is, this is a travesty, this is a public meeting, and the general public has no ability to see who's speaking. None. You could, it, it might not even be Maro Demaro speaking, it could be somebody else, we don't know that. Isn't that a trap? The IT director doesn't have a webcam? I guess not, okay, I'll move on.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, nobody.
Excuse me?
Are we, are we gonna get our laptops soon, Mr. Demaro?
Okay, so um, just yesterday, I got an advice uh, from our vendor, our district, one of the distributor that we ordered from, that um, the shipments uh, we were expecting has been delayed till February. Um, of course, that doesn't help us with the pandemic raging right now. Um, so today, um, we worked with the, the vendors to find what was in stock. Um, not the, uh, the, the exact same equipment, but, but close, but we did find stuff that had arrived that um, had not yet been sold or pushed out the door, and our vendor worked with us to uh, get that um, uh, change in, and we should have um, equipment shipping uh, tomorrow. Um, we had a, a, a separate order with another vendor that had items uh, in stock that um, just came in, um, uh, I think Friday, it started coming in. So, we have people that are imaging those laptops, that are getting them staged and prepared. And um, because we have uh, a good number of uh, employees working from home, uh, under the governor's uh, uh, order that um, we're prioritizing the distribution of laptops, uh, but I, I hope to be able to uh, get you uh, a timeframe in the near future as soon as uh, more of the equipment starts showing up and uh, we can kind of logistically figure out um, what has to go where and how fast it has to get there. Um, but we can't, we can't really, we can't image only so many laptops at once, so obviously uh, we can't uh, you know, unpackage them uh, from the, the, uh, the case when, you know, when it comes in the loading dock and just start handing out boxes of, of virgin laptops. They need to be imaged, they need the software put on them, they need the antivirus put on them. Um, there's a, a whole process that we go through to uh, get the laptops uh, ready to deploy and into the hands of uh, an employee. Uh, so I, I can't give an answer exact date now, but it, it, they're coming soon.
Did I understand you to say we're providing laptops for other people in the county as well?
Uh, yes, and all, all these are purchased with CARES, CARES Act funds. Uh, because they're all pandemic-related and they're all being used um, specifically to uh, work from home. Um, uh, during this uh, time of the pandemic. And uh, for example, um, Public Defenders, um, that entire office is uh, now attempting to work remotely. Uh, they have a number of laptops that they're waiting on, uh, so they have uh, people rotating into the office to get work done that uh, can't work from home. Um, and obviously we can't uh, allow staff to use personal computers to connect to the county network, that would be a huge security breach.
But we connect to the virtual network, right? Council members connected a virtual network? That's not a-
Well, uh, and again, we have um, a, a lot of checks that are put on the computers and we've had issues with council members. Uh, computers that either weren't compatible or needed to be upgraded, or needed to have uh, specific software put on them uh, to make them uh, part of the network. Um, so we, we have done a lot of work in, in, in that area, and we've done the same thing with uh, some other users' computers. But uh, by and large, um, using uh, someone's computer with a home version of Windows, like Windows Home License on it, um, does not work uh, well with the county. Uh, especially if you're going beyond just-
How many laptops is the county purchasing through the CARES money? Throughout the county, how many are we providing?
Altogether, um, I don't have the exact figure, but off the top of my head, it's in the neighborhood of two hundred and thirty.
Wow.
Okay. It's, it's a large undertaking.
All right.
All right.
Let's get back to our-
And just, Mr. McGinley, just a clarification too, Department forty-one, forty-two is not information technology, and I think it's forty-one, seventy-two?
You are correct.
Okay.
So on the spreadsheet, it's wrong.
All right.
Thanks.
Make that correction, thank you, but uh, we have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban. To take the number in the proposed budget, five hundred eighty-one thousand, five eighty, and reduce it down to five twenty-five thousand, which would result, result in a differential of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
No.
Mr. Dermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
No, no.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Okay, we're going to the next page, page thirty-two in your packet. And now we're in the revenue side of the budget. And the first uh, department is the coroner. Number of coroner's report. The proposed budget has an amount of two thousand dollars in revenue. And the proposed number that Mr. Griffith has presented is four thousand dollars, which result in an increase of two thousand dollars in revenue, do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Well, I think Mr. Urban was there first.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the coroner's report to increase the revenue by two thousand dollars. Anyone from the coroner's office?
Mr. McGinley, it's Joan.
Go ahead.
We do not support this increase, uh, our actual revenue as of today on the coroner's report is twenty-two hundred dollars.
Okay.
Uh, we will, we will never make four thousand dollars.
Okay. Questions?
Is it due to the COVID uh, situation we're having, Ms. Hogarth?
No, no, last year our coroner reports were three thousand, one ninety-five. Um, the beginning of last year, the state increased the cost of the coroner reports, so we are actually selling less reports than we did in previous years. Um, I know your explanation for the increase based it on a combination of two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Um, but our overall budget from two thousand eighteen up until now has increased twenty thousand dollars, we just added different revenue li- line items, which will go with the other two amendments that you have also, but um, two thousand that we budgeted for next year is as close as we can get to an estimate of what we will take in.
Yeah, where, where did you say you were now this year, um?
Twenty-two hundred. Twenty-two hundred.
Okay. So you're exceeding your budget this year, correct?
We are exceeding it this year, but not by much.
Well, you, you, yeah, you have another month to go.
Uh, well, we have two weeks.
Yeah.
Questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban. To increase the revenue in the coroner's report line item from two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars, which will result of an increase of two thousand dollars in revenue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Dermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three, yes, eight, no.
Okay. Moving down to the next line item there, autopsy reports. The number in the proposed budget is four thousand dollars, the number in the amendment proposed by Mr. Griffith is eight thousand dollars, which would be an increase of four thousand dollars in revenue, do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On Mr. and Ms. Hogarth?
Um, again, the same with uh, the coroner's report. Right now, we're at five thousand, two hundred and sixty, we budgeted four thousand for two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we are over this year. I don't know if that's because of the number of homicides and the number of overdoses have increased. So I wouldn't say that we would make even fifty-two hundred next year. I would be much more comfortable staying with the four thousand rather than overestimating our revenue.
Okay. Questions?
But you made fifty-two thousand, fifty-two hundred already this year, correct, Ms. Hogarth?
We did, and an autopsy report is five hundred dollars, so you know, maybe we will get one more purchase this month. No guarantee on that.
Ms. Hogarth, it, it, who, um, is it up to the criminal courts, is that, well, who will buy them? Who, who, who purchases these autopsy reports?
Anyone can purchase an autopsy report, for the most part, it's wrongful death suits, uh, criminal cases. You know, so civil or criminal case, most of the time it's the attorneys. Um, again, the state raised the fees, uh, we used to sell a lot more autopsy reports at a hundred dollars. But in January two thousand nineteen, they raised them to five hundred.
Oh.
So, it's really only the people that absolutely have to purchase them now, it's not somebody that just wants to see what showed up in somebody's autopsy. You know, a family members or whatever, they're not gonna pay that five hundred dollars anymore.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I, can I amend that, can I amend that uh, council budget amount to six thousand dollars, would that be helpful?
You can make an amendment anytime, Mr. Griffith, what's your amendment?
Ms. Hogarth?
Um, I would say that that's much closer, I still wouldn't guarantee that we will make it. But, you know, it is, it is much better than eight thousand.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I see you're at fifty-two now, so and, and the history shows that, you know, you're probably gonna be in and around that area unless it, you know, some, some anomaly happens, so I don't think six thousand's unattainable.
Are you making an amendment, Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, I am making an amendment to change that number to six thousand dollars.
Maybe to clean, to do a cleaner, withdraw your motion for the eight thousand.
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my second.
And Mr. Urban withdraws a second, and now you're gonna make a motion for six thousand in the
Correct.
new amount?
Yes.
Which will result in a two thousand dollar differential, correct?
Correct.
So Mr. Griffith made that motion, I think Mr. Haas, did you make that second? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Haas is nodding, yes. So now we have a motion to take the four thousand dollar number, increase it to six thousand dollars, which will result in a two thousand dollar increase in revenue. Okay? Roll call.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
unanimous.
Very good. Continuing down to the next line item, toxology reports. And the proposed budget is twenty-five hundred dollars. The new amount proposed by Mr. Griffith is five thousand dollars, which will result in an increase of revenue of twenty-five hundred dollars, do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, can I change that number based on what uh, Ms. Hogarth has now said? I'm looking through, I, if we could amend that number, if I, if I could do that?
We didn't make a motion yet, so we don't have to amend it, you can-
Okay, all right, let me, let me just change that number, please, I want to change that to eight, to a, a, about a thirty-five hundred dollars, I think should be attainable based on the recognition that uh, Ms. Hogarth just pointed out.
All right, let me read that then, please.
Okay.
Number in the proposed budget is twenty-five hundred dollars. Your motion now says the revenue would go to thirty-five hundred dollars,
Correct.
which will result in an, an increase in revenue, revenue of one thousand dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Griffith makes that motion, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. Ms. Hogarth, do you have any comment in that regard?
Yes, uh, twenty-five hundred, which is what we budgeted for two thousand twenty-one, is where we are at, at right now. Um, which aver- which is an average of two reports a month, because they're a hundred dollars a report, so I would, I'm more comfortable with leaving it at twenty-five hundred, not thirty-five hundred, because you're talking ten more reports that we would have to sell.
So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard, I, I think I heard you say each report is two hundred dollars?
No, one hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars, excuse me?
So we average about two reports a month, if you wanna, you know, average it up.
So with month of December, if we get two more reports, we'd be in the area of twenty-seven hundred dollars, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Hogarth?
Just a comment, Mr. McGinley, I just don't know how the coroner's office can increase revenue if, like, they can't advertise, they can't, you know, have sale. So, I just don't, I think she's in a bind, I mean, I think Ms. Hogarth, you're in a bind, 'cause as much as, I mean, the prices, they are the prices.
Yep.
They are the prices.
And unfortunately, the state sets a lot of them, and we have to live with that result.
Right, and while they increase the fees, then it decreases what
Yep.
is being purchased from us.
And, but Ms. Hogarth, we, if, if you could just allude to the reason why we had such a, well, we had quite a big increase in, in the toxicologies in eighteen, obviously, we, we had like twelve thousand dollars in toxicology reports, plus we had thirty-four hundred dollars with the toxicology reports in nineteen, where they like uh, I, as, as Ms. Sedman said, we obviously can't advertise this, so I would think that the, I, I would think that people are, you know, they're having more issues in the coroner's office with people's dot desk for, um, for the drugs and things like that, I would think that that number should at least stay somewhat stable to some degree, wouldn't you think?
Um, not really, the twelve thousand, one fifty that we collected in two thousand eighteen, nine thousand of that was PA Department of Health money from, the grant money from two thousand seventeen went into toxicology in two thousand eighteen. So we really took in thirty-one fifty- So we really took in thirty-one fifty in toxicology reports in eighteen, thirty-four hundred in nineteen, and we're at twenty-five hundred. Um, again, it, it's a matter of who wants to pay the money for those reports. Those reports used to be fifty, now they're a hundred dollars.
Any other questions? Okay, the motion is to take the number in the proposed budget from twenty-one, twenty-five hundred dollars, increase it to thirty-five hundred dollars, which will result in an increase of one thousand dollars in revenue. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay. Moving down to Department forty-one forty, mapping. In the line item for sale of maps, the proposed budget from manager has five thousand dollars in revenue. Mr. Griffith is proposing a number of ten thousand dollars as revenue for sale of maps, which will result in an increase in revenue of five thousand dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moves Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On the question, do we have somebody from mapping?
Chairman McGinley, it's Dave Parsnick, I could speak to this.
Go ahead.
Um, in, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars and our actuals were seventy-eight hundred. So we dropped that down for twenty-twenty to five thousand dollars. Or in twenty-twenty, we, we did a budget of ten thousand dollars, and so far in twenty-twenty, we have four thousand dollars. So that's the reason why we're looking to decrease that yet again to be more in line with the projected revenues that we're getting in.
Okay. Questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Are you muted, Mr. Perry?
Yeah. No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Okay. We're gonna leave that reserve fund until we get, uh, completed with the amendments, and then we'll get some calculations done so we know what we're, uh, expecting in that reserve fund. On page thirty-three, if you remember our last meeting, we took, uh, twenty thousand dollars out of the other contractual services to support the position that we added in information technology. Uh, as you can see, we appropriate the twenty thousand dollars in all the different, uh, line items that would be appropriate, healthcare, retirement, FICA, Medicare, unemployment, and other communication expenses. It totaled up to twenty thousand dollars. So do we have a motion to do, uh, that amendment?
So move Linda.
Ms. Hough? Do we have a second for Ms. Hough?
Second.
I think that was Mr. Schnee was, was in there first. So we have a motion second. On the question? I think that cleans up that issue from last week. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Ms. Hough? Sorry, yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We have one other amendment. Uh, Mr. Swets will be speaking too. If we remember from last meeting, we, uh, accepted the proposal for the TRAN. And as a result of that proposal, there were some monies that had been budgeted for the interest for that TRAN. And of course, because of the great rate we got and the fact that the banks were favorably upon the county, we were gonna be able to save some money in that interest. So do we have a motion to accept or to move the interest from the TRAN of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the reserve?
So move Linda.
Ms. Hough? And do we have a second for Ms. Hough?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? And, Mr. Swets, do you wanna speak to that, please?
Chair, Mr. McGinley, so as the chair said, we spoke briefly about this last meeting when council approved this. Uh, it is line one hundred ninety-five, forty-seven, twenty-one, five seventy point sixty-eight. So in your budget book, the name of that account is tax anticipation note slash temporary loan. The one year we used it, uh, we had to do the twenty billion dollar emergency borrowing, making an additional account. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand is in the budget book, uh, because of our rate, which as you remember, was just a little bit over point six percent. Uh, the actual cost of that interest rate, plus the underwriting and any fees and the bonds, so everything that was in that packet is gonna be about ninety-nine thousand something, but it's not firm. So I think, uh, uh, change to two, from two hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. For the one hundred and fifty thousand that the chair mentioned, we'll leave enough money for us to pay and also save the budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Questions?
Just a comment, Linda.
Go ahead.
I think that is wonderful. I, just like, thinking back to what this was like nine years ago, I'm just so impressed with all of us.
Well, Ms. Hough, I think you're exactly right. As, as we remember in the early days, we struggled to find anybody who would give us a loan for any period of time. And usually the interest rates were, uh, on the high side, shall we say? But this is much better for us, and obviously it does have a positive effect of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, I think at that point, we've completed any budget amendments that have been submitted. Any other budget amendments that someone might, might have at this point?
Now, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Can we get the budget amendments for the agencies regarding the merit raises, please?
There aren't budget amendments for that, Mr. Griffith. I think I, when we, I think I talked to you about that directly, that there would be, uh,
Well, I talked to Mr. Swets about it, and he said they were gonna have them for this meeting.
Well, I did not receive them. I don't know who would have received them. I did not receive them.
The agency's budget.
For me if I received them, Mr. Griffith.
The agency's budgets won't be balanced, then?
Uh, Mr. Griffith.
There's no money coming out of them.
Mr. Griffith, no money will be coming out of them, and I did not get that out until Monday night. Uh, I, I think I did send it to the chair Monday night. It was late, it was after Friday. And as we had on our phone call, Mr. Griffith, uh, those lines were moved to either purchase service agency or provider services. So, you know, the, the budget will be balanced in moving them to, I can give you the, I could, just like I read the other ones, I could read them if that's what we'd like to do. I'll leave that to the chair.
Honestly, that's the function of the council, is to balance, to, to adopt a balanced budget. And if we're not gonna adopt a balanced budget, then we shouldn't adopt the budget. I mean, that's what our job is here, right? Is council, is adopt balanced budgets? If we took merit raises out, it's not balanced. Is that correct?
Did you send those to the chair, Mr. Swets?
Yeah, let me pull, let me pull them, hold on, make sure I put, I sent it, it's not in my outbox. I mean, literally one second to go to my email.
And that was the reason why we had that conversation on the phone about the merit raise is, was because I didn't wanna get to this point in the budget process and not have a balanced budget for the agencies. That was our conversation. And I was assured by yourself, Lynn Hill, and Adam, that that was gonna take place. And now we're at the meeting, and it's not taking place, which really upsets me because I trusted you to do what you told me you would do.
It was sent Monday at four forty-three PM, Mr. Griffith. I sent it, uh, CC'd the manager and Danielle Cunningham. I should've sent it to all of council, I only included Mr. McGinley. I'm sorry about that. But I did send it Monday night.
Well, the only thing I have is from Ms. Cunningham.
Why doesn't it just come to council? Why does it go to you, Mr. McGinley?
I don't, I didn't ask for it, Mr. Griffith.
He was supposed to send it to all of council.
Mr. Swets, could you forward it to all of us now?
I was not part of the conversation, so I don't have that information, but I certainly, I forward what I have in front of me.
I could send it to all of council right now, if that's.
I will not vote on this budget if it's not balanced, and it is not balanced.
Well, I disagree on that, Mr. Griffith.
I, well, it isn't.
Mr. Swets, would you send it to all of council, please?
It's sent already.
Thank you.
How could you say it's not balanced? If, if there's money's taken out but not adjusted on the.
Taken out, the money's just gonna be reprogrammed into other sections of that budget.
Yeah, but we didn't approve that. We did not approve that reprogramming, and that's our job.
I disagree with you on that, but that's.
That is council's job, harder, Mr. McGinley.
Mr. McGinley, this is Dave Pedry. May I recommend that we take maybe like a ten-minute break here? Counsel can review those budget amendments, and we could have budget and finance review. I would like budget and finance to review all of those amendments and line items because obviously, uh, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had an issue where there was a, a, a wrong line item in a resolution that was passed. I want budget and finance to review all those things. Mr. Urban brought up today, uh, that there was a typo in the one-line item. I would like budget and finance to certify that on the record prior to the amendment being finalized. And it'll also give county council an opportunity to review the email from Mr. Swets. So, ma, could I recommend a ten-minute, ten-minute recess in order for us to do that?
I would, I would prefer that at this point, everybody get the email.
Yes.
Anybody who did not receive the email. Mr. Swets, do you wanna go through that email quickly and explain what these columns mean? Because I, there's no headings that I can see.
Sure, so on the third tab, which is non-general fund amendments, it lists each fund, so I can walk through them.
Go ahead.
Let me open it, I have it on the other screen. So if you go to the last tab, as I mentioned, the two sixty fund, uh, so that, that's the first one we took the merit increase out of. It should go to other contractual services. The four thirty fund, which is convention and visitors, uh, the merit increase would go into the promotions line. For the, for community development, the five sixty fund, miscellaneous expense. And then the next part is all the agencies under Division Seventy, uh, where we recommend either purchase service or provider services. And that, that's the eighty-three thousand that was non-general fund. Uh, whether council votes on them all individually or all as one, I'll leave it up to the chair.
Okay. Everybody understand what the information provides there? The number, the division, department, account, proposed, what it's changed to, increase or decrease, and being moved to.
And, and I will just say, and I will just say, so much for transparency for the people online that wanna watch this stuff. Now they don't have it to look at either. So, you know, another step backwards for home roll. No transparency.
Questions? Do we have a motion from anyone?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, if someone would like to share their screen, it could probably be seen.
Hey, that's a good idea, we could share the screen. Uh, Jared, are you online with us?
Uh, yeah, I am. Um, if someone already has it open, instead of getting it over to me, um, Brian should be able to share, or Linda can. And if you wanted, you could.
She has it open, so that'd be the person to do, please.
Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so we're looking at this, this is the third tab. Okay? There's the funds, four thirty and five sixty. Funds nine-ten, nine-twenty, nine-forty, nine-fifty, nine-sixty. Those are the human service ones. And that's everything, right, Mr. Swets?
Yes, the first one is nine-one-one, it should've had a heading there, but the two sixty fund is nine-one-one. And that is all of the, uh, merit raises that were reprogrammed for the non-general fund departments.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any motions?
I'll move. I move to accept all these amendments.
Ms. Hough?
Second.
And Mr. Vog's second. On the question? Roll call.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGin, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Uh, at this point, we're gonna take a break. It's nine-twelve. We come back at nine-twenty-five and allow everybody to catch up with the calculations.
That's enough time for us.
Enough time?
Yes.
Nine-twenty-five, please.
Okay, I think we're ready, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, before you, uh, give us that number, would you give us the current millage number, please?
Sure, I have it right on the paper. Give me a few seconds, uh, because I know that's in the resolution. I wrote it down. It's 6.1696 mils.
6.1696 mils.
Correct.
All right, going to the reserve number. You have a new sum for that?
698132. Yes.
I'll repeat that once more and make sure I wrote it down correctly. 698132?
Yes, that's what Danielle and I both got, doing it separately.
Okay. Well, uh, it's now 9:26. Is everybody back from break?
Yes.
You okay with everybody?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Then we need one more motion for the amendment to change the money in the reserve from 247,00193 to the new number, which would be 698,0132. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I thought I heard Mr. Schnee first and then Mr. Haas. Is that okay? All right, we have a motion to change the reserve number. And the final reserve number would be 698132. Mr. Schnee, second by Mr. Haas on the question. Roll call, please.
Ms. Seddon?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
I vote yes to approve the 2021 fiscal year budget with the exception of the portion related to the court administration slash courts.
Got it.
Which I abstain from voting and request that the abstention from voting on the court budget is noted for official purposes.
Mr. Perry, so we're voting on the amendment to
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Change the, uh, money in the reserve. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. You'll have to hear me again later.
All right.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. And then our final act in regards to budget would be to vote on the ordinance, which we've had in our packet. Just to note, in section two under taxes, the millage rate would be 6.1696. Mr. Swets verified that number. And the budget would be effective with January 1, 2021. Questions? We have a motion?
Yes. It's, it's Linda on the resolution.
Yep.
Um, in section three, or the ordinance, yeah, the ordinance. Um, in section three, it says county council hereby approves the attached 2021 fiscal year budget as amended. Um, I think we need to say budgets.
Okay, we can add S as, uh, an addition there.
That's all. Thank you.
Any problem with that, anyone? Budgets, the plural, instead of budget? Again, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with that small addition that Ms.?
So move, Linda.
Second, Sheila.
Okay. On the question?
Mr. McGinley on the question?
Yes, sir.
Could we be sure that whoever signs this document puts the date after their name? So we know that the thing was signed on a certain day. Okay? Especially when it goes to the manager. We want to make sure that it's signed.
Signing and putting the date on my signature, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you very much. And we need to make that, we need to make that change in our codes along the way. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Bear with me as I read.
Is it time now? Yes, it is, Mr. Perry.
All right. I vote yes to approve the 2021 fiscal year budget with the exception of the portion related to court administration slash courts from which I abstain from voting and request that that abstention from voting on the court budget is noted for official purposes. The specific line items are as follows. Division 13 courts, 510, 15 court wages, 520, 10 social security, 520, 15 Medicare, 520, 20 unemployment, 530, 30 healthcare, 530, 40 life insurance. The reason is that my married daughter works in that division as a court reporter and she has been there for over 20 years. Thank you.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Seddon?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, can I have the floor, please?
Uh, who's speaking?
Uh, Councilman Vog.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Vog.
I just want to state something as well. I thought we were voting on, uh, Ms. Houck's amendment to the ordinance first, so that's why I didn't include this, but I'm a member of the Luzerne County Community College 01 Recovery Advisory Board. So I'm abstaining from voting on line 100.96.4810.590. But as to the remainder of the budget, my vote is still yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay, then we're done with the passing of the ordinance. I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work. As you can see, we spent a lot of time and effort both at meetings and outside of meetings to come up with what we think is a very fair balance and budget going forward for 2021, which we hope is a much better year than we, the current year that we're certain that we're in right now. But it's a lot of work, a lot of effort, and I appreciate everyone's efforts on that part. Uh, one final, uh, item. I have to appoint a Nighthawk Committee in order to work with the recycling and, uh, people to get that planned together so we can meet our deadlines. I would, I'm going to ask three people on council to do that. I try to to spread it out so that some of the people who are not working in the elections and Mr. Griffith now has another assignment with the county action plan and several, and some people who hopefully have been around the next time this plan has to be done. So I'd ask Mr. Perry to serve on that committee and serve as the chair. Ms. Radell to serve on that committee and serve as the vice chair. And Mr. Vog to serve on that committee. If there are other people who are interested, we have some room to add members if necessary. Please, uh, let me know if you have an interest in helping with that committee. Having said that, we're now at public comment.
Hello, Mr. McGinley. Jason Carr from Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Councilman Harry Haas for recognizing that the insurance broke, the insurance broker increasing premiums by over a million dollars is absolutely outrageous. Uh, I was there last year when the move to change brokers was orchestrated by Councilman Vog and, uh, some other insiders. And, uh, it's a shame that you changed from such a reputable company to the current company. Uh, and actually, the, uh, the manager, Mr. Mr. Pedry, should have brought this to the attention of council, uh, as soon as he knew about it. Uh, and as well, uh, listening to Mr. Haas speak today, it sounds as if the reason why he didn't receive the information in a timely manner was a delay tactic, so they couldn't be replaced at the beginning of the year. That's very transparent and obvious for anyone that, uh, saw what happened in the beginning, uh, leading up to, uh, to, to, to today. Uh, very unfortunate. Um, secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. Haas as well as, um, Mr. Griffith for, uh, providing a majority of for providing a majority of these amendments to the budget, trying to save the taxpayers any amounts of money. Is grateful to anyone who pays taxes to the county. With a budget of $153 million, only having a reserve balance of $698,000 is paltry. That's something that the county has to continue to work on and continue actually to reduce the size of government. And I guess, thirdly, approximately two meetings ago, I referred to the city of Wolksboro and Hazelton as, I think I said it was a dump and slums. That was two weeks ago that I referred to these two cities. In the last three days, from Friday through Sunday, in the city of Wolksboro, there were three shootings. Two people were shot and one person is dead. In the city of Hazelton, in that same time period, there were two shootings and one person was assassinated. An Indian gentleman trying to provide for his family, shot dead, assassinated. And today, there was a hostage situation in Kingston. So there's a greater underlying problem in Luzerne County, not only with the budget, but as well with the people that want to live in the county. How do you attract, how do you govern to attract better people to reside in these three cities? Thank you so much.
Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raivo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raivo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I have a question with regards to the budget. My computer was updating, so I couldn't comment on budget items, so I apologize if this was already answered. But I would like to know as far as, since the funding is going to come out with either regards to the state or Congress in the near future regarding COVID relief or emergency relief funding, and the amount of it's being tallied, bantered around $160 billion by Congress. If that's to be received by the state anytime next year, I would like to know how budget and finance is going to budget that and how auditing, excuse me, is going to be done in terms of when that money's received. And I heard that there's going to be a formula similar to the CARES Act legislation that was passed earlier this year. So that's my one question. And my one comment is, as a member of the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority Board, the board voted unanimously to adopt the amended resolution to add Pittston City to the Stafford Point Tiff. There is, for the council and for the managements and the Office of Law edification, the board added the date certain of December 31, 2032. That was the amendment to the agreement that was adopted unanimously today. So just wanted to, as a courtesy, as a board member of the Redevelopment Authority, to notify council and to let them know that our role and responsibility to this process is now concluded. And the respective taxing bodies will get a copy of the resolution, signed resolution, to you. And I'd like to wish all the council members, the management, employees, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Brian Shiner?
Mr. Shiner?
By design, our home rule government was to offer openness, transparency to the people, and streamline our government. Over the past nine years, we've increased the budget by nearly $35 million. As seen tonight, we still don't have the openness and the transparency we're supposed to have. In searching through some of the resolutions on the website, I found resolutions with absolutely no date. No date with the signatures, no date as to even what meeting they were voted on. We were talking tonight about the insurance carrier, the broker. The resolution from last year, December 10, is missing from the website. It's not there. We spend a fortune in IT, and going into the times that we are, it's necessary. But what are we getting for our money? We increase the budget, we add on employees, and yet, we have a council meeting that we get to see pretty much you, the chair, Mr. McGinley, and maybe a few other people here and there. The rest of the country does meetings, including our schools, and they have what's called a gallery view, or the Brady Bunch format, where everyone is there. You can see them. You know who's talking. But we can't get there. I would hope that in the coming year, our IT department can figure this out, and maybe we can get what we're paying for. Maybe we can get the council members to be there, like you should be, as though we were at a live meeting. We are 10 months into these virtual meetings now with no end in sight. And I think it's high time our IT department get on the ball and start doing this the right way. These meetings are atrocious. I watch schoolchildren that I babysit go through their meetings with their teachers, and they are smooth. They are easy. They run correctly because they know what they're doing. I think we need to get there also. On another note, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays and a better and a brighter year for 2021. Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
Well, I finally got some people on the screen of my little laptop, or my little tablet. I could see Ms. Edman. I could see Linda. I could see Walter. I could see Perry. I could see Mr. McGinley. And this is only a little laptop or little tablet. But I have to echo what Mr. Shiner said. We're 10 months into this now, and it should be a multiple meeting where everyone can see everyone, that they see their expressions, they see their, when they're saying something, their thoughts project over the screen so that they know what, you know, people feelings are. And I have to commend Mr. Griffin, all right, for taking the post of whipping boy for the, for that, at the conservation people, because we're going to beat them up, of course, with the rainwater tax people. And also, was, if a budget was, I don't want to say illegal, but I heard a couple of people in there saying, well, the budget, we found money here and we found money there, and, you know, I don't know, what's going on? If they found this money in different places, why wasn't brought up sooner? And then, my wish for Christmas is all the county council people get their laptops. And what about the people that use their own phones and their own laptops for meetings like this? Shouldn't there be a stipend for us? And the budget voting, it seems to be that we're not seeing what we're going to put into that county council reserve amount so that nobody can touch it unless they need it from the county council, not from the county manager. I really, I'm really upset with the way things were managed, and that shows in my reflection of my voice and my face, as people can see me. So at that note, I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Bon Natale to all you Italian people, Feliz Navidad. And if I missed any, have a nice holiday. Thank you and have a good evening.
Other members of the public?
Mr. Dwyer from Marshall?
Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
To be quite honest about it, whether it's good or bad, I didn't really have a comment on the whole budget thing because I wasn't sure what to think. But I would like to applaud and commend Mr. Shiner for illuminating to me that in the nine years, it's gone up $35 million. And honest to God, I don't know what to think about that. I mean, I understand those costs. I'm just not sure how to put that perspective.
I would like to thank Mr. Manta for reminding me about the laptops. When that issue was discussed, we, according to the IT department, weren't getting the ones we ordered because of the supply chain and whatnot. I get that. But the laptops were then replaced with a substitute laptop, and I don't recall anyone commenting if there was a price reduction in the cost of them because we weren't getting the ones we asked for. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Very none?
Mr. McGinley?
Motion for adjournment?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Linda, a member of council. I would just like to say that, and I keep saying this, I say it periodically, and when I'm not here, somebody has to remember to remind people of this, that the budget did increase over the last nine years. But I also want people to remember that in 2011, the amount of debt service budgeted was $3 million. And in 2012, the amount of debt service that we needed to budget was $25 million. And our debt service now is around $26 million. So yes, there was an increase, but a good portion of that was due to some bad choices that were made before 2012 that caused the budget to increase by $2 million overnight from 2011 to 2012. So I just want to be clear about that. And, you know, I've been saying it for nine years. There will come a time when I'm not on this council, and I want someone to remember to remind people about that. Thank you.
And very correct comment that that was one of the things that we faced with the home rule government coming in. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Chairman, one item before we leave.
Okay, Mr. Snee, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank Manager Pedri and the division heads, and most of all, the 1,500 employees that work for Luzerne County. I mean, it's been a very difficult year, where we've lost loved ones to COVID. And it's been very difficult for people. We've lost family members. I call them family members that worked for Luzerne County that we lost during this period of time. And our prayers to go out to their families, the people that we lost, and to thank the 1,500 employees for going to work every day and being very proud of them because they go to work every day with the same concerns that we have. Bringing it home to a family member that's especially older, that might actually take a bad effect on them. And it's just been a very bad year, but the only good thing is there's no tax increase for the people. But again, for all our prayers to go out to the people that we lost during 2020. And everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Duly noted. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Edman, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Leanne? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, the abstentions and unheard, motion carries. Have a good holiday season as well as you can. Please stay healthy. And we'll see everybody in January of 2021. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hi, Walter. Good night, Mr. Perry. Good night, Harry.
It's like the words.
Good night, Eric. Hi, Eric.